Ready? Ready. Guys, ready?
Yep.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome. I'd like to call to order the Planning Board meeting for March 1st, 2018. Thank you all for coming out this evening. Our first order of business is approval of minutes from the February 1st, 2018 Board meeting. Does anybody have comments, questions, or a motion on that?
I'll move to...
Crystal, mine.
Oh.
Go ahead, Crystal.
I had just two corrections. Did you get those, Cindy?
I did. I will make those corrections that you sent by email.
Okay.
Well, one you had inquired with Harmon, and I didn't get a response.
Yeah, Harmon once said that I did not agree with having inclusionary zoning requirement go away after three years if someone hadn't redeveloped their house. And I said I thought that I did agree, and Harmon agreed with me, so...
Yeah, I read what you wrote, and also read the minutes. And it seemed like it pretty much conveyed that, that, you know, I had said that it would place funds in the Inclusionary Housing Program, and you corrected me, and then I agreed with your correction. So I was okay with it as it stands. I don't know if you felt like it needed to be reworded.
I thought it was confusing, so that's why I suggested the rewording.
And Harmon, did you see that rewording?
Yeah, I wasn't sure about the rewording. Crystal, what if it just said, "See Gray stated that funds would be placed in the Inclusionary Housing Program unless they do not rebuild within three years," and then I agree with you? If we just changed the word disagreed to stated, because that's a true fact.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, that's fine. And then the other one was just on the Board discussion when we were talking about ADUs and OAU's, to change sprinklers to fire suppression. There was one other minor wordsmith.
Yes, I got those. I will make those changes. The ones you have in front of you, John, are prior to her amendments, but you can go ahead and sign the last page, and then I will make the amendments.
Okay, assuming that the Board moves and passes.
Assuming, assuming.
Anyone have any additional comments or a motion? Liz, I think you were about to...
Yeah, got complicated, though. I move that the Planning Board approve the minutes of the February 1st, 2018 Planning Board meeting as amended by Crystal Gray and accepted by Harmon. Look at them.
As well as the comments that came in by email.
As well as any other amendments that came in from the Board by email.
Great, thank you, Liz.
I'll second that one.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor of Liz's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item we have on our agenda tonight is public participation for matters not subject to a public hearing. So, as many of you probably know, we do have a public hearing tonight on comprehensive plan land use map designation at 311 Mapleton. We'll have a separate public hearing for that, but if anyone would like to address the Board on anything else, now would be the time to do that. Cindy, has anyone signed up to do that?
No.
Would anyone like to address the Board on issues other than the 311 Mapleton map change? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next agenda item, number four, is discussion of dispositions, Planning Board call-ups, and continuations. We have three items on our call-up list this week. Are there any that people have questions about, would like to discuss, or would like to call up? Liz?
I have some questions on call-up item A, and I hope somebody from staff can help me. Is Alicia or someone else from staff here who can... Oh, great.
And while she's on her way up, just so the public follows, that's the South Boulder Creek Habitat Restoration and Flood Plane Development Permit.
Okay. Aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
So, my question, there are two permits under this. One is a flood plane development permit, and from the map, it looks like that is downstream of US 36, between 36 and South Boulder Road. Is that right?
That's correct.
And the other one is the wetland permit, and that spans the entire creek length from Highway 93 to South Boulder Road?
Yes, approximately.
Okay. So, I'm wondering, my main question is about what assumptions are in there about the presence of the dam or the levee, CU levee? Because those are, I mean, what happens to the levee and what happens with the dam will modify the flow regime. And if you're calculating flood planes and that kind of thing downstream of... Right now, they're not there. When they are there, you'll have a different flow regime. So I'm wondering, are there any assumptions about that in the...
There are no assumptions about that in this project. When that project does come forward, they'll have to do their own wetland and flood permits. So at that point, we'll be looking closer at what effects those will have.
Uh-huh, okay. So, the call-up talks about restoring stream channel stability and sediment transport functionality, but I'm just wondering, has there been any discussion about putting all this money and effort into that kind of thing when you know, when we know that the stream could change dramatically with the...
Right, so this is a project that our Open Space and Mountain Parks Department is doing, and they're basically wanting to just go in there and clean up from the 2013 flood and just restore the channel alignment. And I guess there's some high spots in the channel now, so it's not flowing or allowing fish passage very well. So they're just kind of wanting to clean things up right now. They're not proposing to make the wetlands better or anything like that. It's basically a restoration project.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Could I ask a question? So it looked like it was approximately, the work could occur over approximately a four-year timeframe, based on the dates I saw on the applications, or on the paperwork. Does that sound about right?
So the work will occur this year, and then they're required to monitor the wetlands for five years after the end of the work.
And do we anticipate much impact on the multi-use trails from the work? No closures or anything?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
All right.
Other questions? Great, thank you very much, Alicia. Any other questions or desire to call up any of these items? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the next, and I suspect longest, agenda item this evening, which is a public hearing and Planning Board consideration of an action to correct a Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan land use map designation at 311 Mapleton Avenue. And I understand, Liz, that you recuse yourself.
Right, because I live very close to it, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you. We'll be in touch.
Thanks, John, for all your hard work.
Absolutely.
For the last meeting.
That's right. Thank you. And this is probably a good time just to do Board disclosures before we move on, since Liz has started that trend. Thank you, Liz. So David, why don't we start with you, and we'll come down the Board.
Okay, well, I took a site tour and walked around the site. I did take Alan Delamere back on April 9th, provided us with a PowerPoint that I think everybody's looked at. I did take that with me on an iPad so that I could have his little advised route. I don't think I learned anything from that that I, everybody else wouldn't have learned otherwise, so... But I did use that, since it was provided to us openly. Let's see, other than that, I haven't had any ex parte conversations. I did watch the streaming of the OSBT meeting from the 14th of February, just so I could gather some additional background information from that open meeting, and look back at the concept review minutes from 2015, since I wasn't on the Board at that point. So, but that's also open meeting.
Great, thank you, David. Harmon?
That is a hard act to follow. I have no ex parte communications that I need to report.
And I have very little, other than I did serve on the Open Space Board of Trustees, which was on the West Trail Study area, so we did look at this access point and the trails associated with it. So I have that information outside of this record.
Nothing disclosed for me, other than site visits.
Great, Crystal?
I've been up in the site numerous times. I served on the Board during the concept review. I was on the Open Space Board, so as tours and orientations, we talked about the Sanatoss Valley and the lots that were platted before. The city bought those, some of those lots, just right on the west side of Dakota Ridge. I also served on the Parks Board when the substation was approved. Actually, I didn't vote for it, but... And we talked about the history of the Sanatoss Valley. And I read everything that everyone sent, and I didn't watch the Open Space meetings, but I read the minutes.
Great, thank you, Crystal. Peter?
I visited the site and have no other ex parte communication on the project.
Terrific, thank you. So just a little bit of preview of coming attractions here. This is a little bit of a different matter than we often see here, and it is limited tonight just to the question of whether or not to correct the Boulder Valley Comp Plan land use map on that point. And so that is a legislative decision that we, along with council, would have to address before any of those changes could be made. We are not considering tonight what a future use of this particular parcel will be. We know that there's a site review application that's out there, and there certainly will be a public process and hearing related to that, but our decision tonight is narrowly based on the criteria in the Comp Plan related to that amendment and not necessarily to that use. And so we don't assume any particular use, or indeed any use at all in the future related to that. So those issues will come up tonight, and our discussion, I think, will be focused on those historical issues related to the map amendment. So the way things will work tonight, staff will first provide a presentation for us to consider. That'll be followed by some Board discussion or questions, actually just questions at that point, to clarify and better understand some of the issues and questions we might have. That will be followed, then, by the public hearing, which is your opportunity to let us know what you think, and we definitely are very interested in all of your comments tonight. And I'll talk just before we start, then, about just some of the time limits and ground rules and that sort of thing, just because we do want to keep things moving and give everybody a chance to weigh in on the subject. Once that happens, we'll bring it back to the Board for a conversation and decision, which could include continuing it, but probably will include a decision. We usually try to get that done in the same evening. So with that, Leslie, I think you're leading the affair tonight, and thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Leslie Ellis, Comprehensive Planning Manager, and really, all I'm doing is handing it off to Phil Kleisler, who's doing the presentation, but I wanted to introduce the team. So we also have Dan Burke and Bethany Collins from Open Space Mountain Parks, and we have Elaine McLaughlin also from Planning, should you have questions for them.
Great, and I want to have a special thank you for Phil for showing up, because I knew you've been out sick for a while. So thank you for rallying to join us tonight.
Thank you. Phil Kleisler, Planning, Housing and Sustainability. This presentation will attempt to be brief and cover some of the high points of the materials found in your packet in regards to a Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan land use designation map error correction for 311 Mapleton Avenue. The staff presentation will begin with a few notes around the process and background of the site. Most of the presentation will involve the analysis, and we'll conclude with the staff recommendation. The review criteria for your decision this evening is found in the Comprehensive Plan or the Comp Plan, and it states that if a discrepancy is found to exist within the Comprehensive Plan, that it's clearly a drafting error, mapping discrepancy, or clerical mistake, either the city or the county, after referral request to the other agency, may correct such error. The process for correcting that error is generally outlined here that we have taken. The first formal step when you find an error in the Comp Plan is a referral to the other agency. In this case, that's the Boulder County Land Use Department. The Boulder County Land Use Department then has 30 days to review and comment, and that referral comment was included in your packet this evening. We've also visited with the Open Space Board of Trustees three times on this matter. Most recently, on February 14th, we held a public hearing where they provided a recommendation to the Planning Board to consider, and that was also included in your packet. Since the property is within Area 1 of the Comprehensive Plan, it does require an affirmative motion by both the Planning Board and City Council in order for the error correction to be made. Just a minute. A little bit about the property. Sorry, my voice is a little off. It's a 15-acre property, which you probably recall from the concept plan review. It's located within the city of Boulder and is privately owned, and tonight's discussion is really around the roughly four acres of open space, other land on the northwest portion of the site. As you recall, the nurses dormitory, parking lots, drive aisle, and the portion of the Dakota Ridge Trail is within that open space other boundary. This is something that we won't spend too much time on, because you see this quite often, but the land uses and the zoning for the site. The 15-acre site is a mix of public and open space other designations in the Comprehensive Plan. And to the right is the zoning, and particularly the area that we're focused on, that northwest portion, is zone public, which does allow for a variety of development-related uses. And just a note on the OSO, since it is the topic of the main discussion tonight, it is, as you know, intended to be an aspirational designation to indicate lands designated prior to 1981 that the city and county are interested in preserving through some method. It doesn't mean that it's protected open space, or that the city necessarily wants to purchase it or protect it, but it does provide a substantial community benefit in that when we receive development application or annexation petitions, it does prompt particularly the open space staff to do a pretty thorough analysis around how the property can provide open space services, and that's exactly what happened in this case. The Planning Board and council also made some amendments to this definition during the last Comp Plan update that just wrapped up. And you may recall the underlying sentence here at the end of that first paragraph, which states that by itself, this designation does not ensure open space protection. There were some conversations towards the end of the update process around sort of concerns that the designation, definition of that designation, may mislead folks to thinking that OSO land is all permanently protected open space when it's not, and so that was in there, sort of as a clarification to that definition. And then those bracketed, italicized sentences at the end are really just a house-cleaning item around the alignment of OSO within the city as it relates to ditches and waterways, which is typically where you find this designation within the city of Boulder. Before we get into the analysis, just one question that was raised during the Open Space Board of Trustees meeting, which was, why now? Why are we looking at this particular map error designation now? The answer to that is that it was flagged during the development review process. We, as part of our daily work plan items, do not proactively look at comprehensive map errors and seek to correct them, but when we receive development applications that clearly have a mapping error, we do go through the typical process of bringing this forward to decision-makers for action. Most recently, you may recall the 1996 Arapahoe annexation for the Silver Saddle. There was an OSO error correction bundled up with that annexation petition. That was, I believe, the most recent one that you all have looked at. In this case, the red flag really stemmed from an underlying tenant of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, and that is a compact urban city surrounded by open space and rural land uses. And that's why, one of the reasons why the open space other designation, 85% of it, is outside the city limits. By contrast, this particular OSO designation is within the city limits on a developed portion of the hospital site. And so when we saw that, we, quite frankly, kind of shook our, scratched our heads and wondered why it was there, and that's when we realized that we needed to do some more analysis. At the end of the day, we found that it was an error, and we are presenting that information to you tonight, really for two reasons. One is the incorrect location of the Silver Lake Ditch through historical maps, which is generally shown here in yellow or orange. And two is the written documentation produced by the Open Space Mountain Parks staff through extensive research dating back to the 60s and 70s. And so what we'd like to do now for the next few minutes, just to give you a rundown of some of those maps and analysis that are included in your packet, more of a chronological update. And so it starts in the 60s and the 70s. We would like to highlight that there was some kind of priority setting among the open space priorities for this particular area of the city. One of those priorities, and we'll get to a little bit more specific in just a second, but was the 1967 Green Belt Program, which identified areas above the blue line, which is shown here on the left, and you'll see the 311 Mapleton site outlined in purple on the bottom there. And then years later, the Open Space Board of Trustees moved to actually move that line east in some areas to actually straddle, what we believe straddle, portions of that 311 Mapleton site. And so we'd like to provide some more information on that. The 1967 Green Belt Program identified that land above the blue line, not presently in the city-state or federal ownership, from N-Car site north to Pine Brook Hills be a priority for open space preservation. In this case, the 311 Mapleton site is well below the blue line. Another documented priority that we found was minutes from a 1976 Open Space Board of Trustees meeting. And at that time, the Board talked at detail about setting an eastern boundary of open space priorities for this area. And page 51 of your packet begins, that's where the notes, the minutes from that meeting begin, and included in that packet is the map on the left, the black line showing staff's depiction geographically of the motion from that meeting of where we believe that line was intended to be drawn. The map to the right is the same exact line, but it's a red dash, and all we've done here is just put labels on it so that we can, and we're not expecting you to read this, we're going to zoom in, to highlight how we believe this motion was intended. And this other upper portion really wasn't discussed too much at the Open Space Board of Trustees meeting. It generally follows the Silver Lake Ditch and the blue line, but what was discussed was the southern area, and that was discussed at length. And these meeting minutes, when you look at them, it talks a lot about, you know, all open land without houses, preserving things west of the Silver Lake Ditch, and also gaining the subdivided lots owned by the sanitarium into the city's open space inventory. And so there's a lot happening on this map, so let me just walk you through it for just a second. The subdivided lots owned by the sanitarium is actually geolocated and imported into this map, and that's what you see. That's actually the subdivision plat from the 50s. And if you look on the Boulder County assessor site, you still see a platted roadway coming up here, a cul-de-sac. This was the subdivided lots in place that we believe were talked about during that Open Space Board of Trustees meeting. And generally speaking, that red dotted line is what we believe is to be intended, was intended for the eastern boundary for that open space priority area. And so it generally follows the Silver Lake Ditch until it approximately intersects the subdivided lots owned by the sanitarium. And so that's that orange dot there. It then says, and was clarified, from the point of the Silver Lake Ditch where the sanitarium lands had west, we believe that that's generally this area where the lots head west, and then it continues straight south, so that includes the ridge to the north line of Mapleton. The ridge, in this case, you see the line of trees to the north that kind of comes down, and we believe it kind of straddles the property line between these platted lots and the 311 Mapleton Avenue. This was discussed at length at the Open Space Board of Trustees. We wanted to provide as much detail as we had to the... We wanted to provide as much detail as we had to the, to the planning board on this particular item, since it was discussed. Early on in the analysis, we also received some old parcel maps from Boulder County dated 1979, 1985, and this was one of the things that began, that began our research into this item, because we know that the Silver Lake Ditch generally follows the western boundary of the 311 Mapleton site. This is a very crude drawing of that ditch. But what we saw in these parcel maps was the Silver Lake Ditch actually going through the 311 Mapleton site, and once we overlaid the boundary and that open, existing open space other, it directly aligned with that. And so if you see there, you'll see kind of a line on the eastern boundary of that open space other, and it says Silver Lake Ditch on it. And it was around that time that we began pulling some other maps and doing kind of a similar overlay, and that's when we started to see, this is a zoning map from around that time, we started to see that same ditch alignment show up in these maps around this time. And again, these were pretty crude drawled maps. They were either with a marker, with screen tone or zip-a-tone. Looking at the 1981 open space map, you'll remember that the open space other definition is lands designated prior to 1981. This is a portion of that 1981 map with the crosshatching signifying the proposed open space. And again, when we overlaid the boundary and the open space other, it aligned with that, with that designation. And so what we think happened in this case was that the city was interested in preserving everything west of the Silver Lake Ditch. The Silver Lake Ditch was mapped in the wrong location, which then led to an incorrect designation on this 311 Mapleton site. That's what we believe happened. That 1981 map of that proposed open space was eventually brought into the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan land use map. And so we just saw the proposed open space. We then brought that into the Comp Plan map as our open space layer to the Comp Plan for the benefit of having just one open space map for the city. The two different shades of green here don't signify anything. That's, when you kind of zoom out at the map, you'll see that people kind of traced heavily around the boundary of a polygon and then sort of shaded it in. And these were hand-drawn up until 1995, when we actually digitized that land use layer. And so in essence, we took a crude drawn map, hand-drawn map, and traced over it into our GIS system. And that's why you see some of the things like you saw at the Silver Saddle, where it just, alignment's just off, and that's really probably the main purpose why we see those from time to time. It was around this time that we were also, in the 90s, looking to purchase adjacent, adjacent land for the city's open space inventory. Included in the packet is also a memo from, I believe it's 1990, from the Open Space Department to City Council, indicating that we were interested in reopening discussions with the hospital staff for all the landline above and west of the Silver Lake Ditch. The map attached to that City Council memo does include the actual location of the ditch, and so this is where city staff, at least at this point, were interested pretty clearly in acquiring that land outside of that 311 Mapleton property. We purchased that land adjacent to the property, and then in 2000, that is when the Comprehensive Plan open space designation was divided into three separate designations that we have today. So we have open space acquired for everything we've purchased, open space development rights for things with conservation easements and so on, and then all the other stuff that was left over from that designation, which is called open space other. In 2000, since we just purchased everything adjacent to 311 Mapleton, that was reverted to open space acquired, which left the 311 Mapleton portion as open space other, which is how it remains today. And at this time, in looking at all of the information, we have yet to find anything outside of that incorrect ditch alignment that follows the open space other designation as that does. So, once we concluded our research, after discovering that error, that, again, that first formal step in the process was a referral to Boulder County. Again, they have 30 days to review and comment on referrals such as this, and these are things that happen really on a weekly basis as part of implementing the Comp Plan. And I'll just go ahead and read, I don't want to parse words here, so I'll just read a couple of sentences from the Boulder County Land Use Staff's response, and that says that county staff confirmed that the Silver Lake Ditch was incorrectly mapped in the past, including the Drum Lake map from 1955, that shows the ditch location further to the east than its actual location. City staff's conclusion that the OSO designation was an error based on its alignment with previous incorrect mapped location of the ditch is plausible. However, county staff did not find evidence that the incorrect ditch mapping is the definitive case of the open space other land use designation. Therefore, the county staff did not conclude that the open space, open space other land use designation is clearly a mapping error. In addition to providing comments, they also did provide this drum map from 1955 showing, again, that incorrect ditch alignment. On February 14th, the Open Space Board of Trustees did hold a public hearing and provided the following recommendation to the planning board, that it is probably but not clearly a mapping error. There was a lot of discussion during that meeting, a lot of discussion around the word "clearly" in the Comprehensive Plan, questions around some of the historical property lines and interpretations of that open space Board of Trustees minutes from the 70s, and then a bit of conversation around kind of looking back at documents and minutes from 40 years ago of what's knowable and what's unknowable. And so things that were mentioned there was, things that are knowable are generally that the maps were wrong, and, and there was little contest, there was general agreement about the maps being incorrect at that time. But what was unknowable was if the OSBT thought, when referring to the Silver Lake Ditch, that it was, they were referring to in their mind as the correct ditch location that's on the ground or those incorrect mapped locations, and so there's a number of things that are just not knowable. And so they recognized that, and that was a big part of their discussion, and so we want to make sure that we're providing all relevant information to you. The second part of their meeting involved specific guidance to the Open Space Mountain Park staff regarding their review of the development application moving forward. In general, they supported staff's analysis and asked that they continue the development review process, and they did make, find that the fee title acquisition of that entire OSO area was not, not recommended at this, this time. And that brings me to the staff recommendation, which is to find that a discrepancy exists within the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan regarding the land use map designation, and I won't read the entire thing because it's on the screen. A couple of next step points. April 19th, it looks like we are now scheduled to bring the site review to the planning board. On April 19th, May 15th, and June 19th, council would receive those applications. Next Monday, City Council has indicated that they're interested in having a matters, a discussion under matters pertaining to the schedule of the other development applications next Monday night. And that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Phil. Grab a quick drink of water there. Do folks have questions, Harmon? Looks like you're, go ahead.
Well, Phil, first of all, excellent job. Very clear presentation. I just, I have two questions, and one is, on page two, it says that if planning board finds that an error does exist on the subject property, staff expects City Council to then consider this item concurrently with the development applications later this year. So, has City Council already indicated that they want to call this up?
I'll jump in with regard to dates. So, City Council on Monday night is actually going to have a conversation about what dates they might consider first the rezoning, the first hearing for the rezoning, and consider a call-up. That's the date that's tentatively scheduled for May 15th. And then, right now, it's looking as though if there were a call-up and a broader public hearing around the rezoning and also the site review call-up, that would probably be June 19th. However, if they are also looking at this land use item, they'll either do that on the 19th combined with that hearing, or they'll find another date for that to separately occur, so probably sometime in late May or early June. And that's the discussion they'll have Monday night, is about the scheduling.
And I don't think there has been any indication whether City Council is interested in calling up the site review, but a part of the application is a rezoning request, and that automatically goes to City Council and would be processed parallel to the site review application. So, there will be a council hearing scheduled on this.
So, what's the rezoning request?
On the, there is a portion of the property that's being proposed to be redeveloped that's currently zoned RL1, and the Comp Plan shows a public land use map designation for that area.
So, the parcel actually has split land use map designation in one place and a split zoning in another?
Yes.
Interesting. So, I guess my only comment is, is that I think it would have been better in the staff report to make it a little bit more clear that there's a difference between the site review, which is an application that the council would call up on a discretionary basis, and the zoning piece that the council would have to weigh in on. I didn't like the message that it sent, the way I read it, which was that council had already, you know, there's a fait accompli that this was going to be a called-up item, when in fact, final authority is generally with the planning board for site reviews. So, also, I think it did have a, it made me feel a sense of politicization of the development applications and the, the land use map change by putting them together, because the land use map change is clearly a change that's supposed to be a staff-generated change to correct a mapping error, and the development application is, you know, private party application for a development project. And so I would have liked to see a little bit more clarity separating those two things, and possibly more clarity in separating the dates of those hearings.
Could I just add one thing to that? I believe the final authority for a site review is the City Council, if they get five votes to call it up and hold a hearing.
That's why I said generally. It lands with planning board unless it's called up.
And let's, let's bring it back to questions, just because we're at the questions portion, we'll have a chance to come back and discuss this once we've heard from the public. Are there other questions that folks have for Phil or staff? David?
Process question. If this had been done as part of a, like the 2015 update to the Comp Plan, it wouldn't necessarily have to meet a clearly, you know, that'd be clearly an error. There could be other reasons to put it in, you know, because the whole Comp Plan's open, so that we wouldn't be under these kind of tight constraints if we, if we could have done it at that point.
That's correct.
And if, I could just follow up on that briefly. If that's something where either the applicant requests or the city decides to pursue, what would be the process if we did not recommend that finding of clear error tonight, but the city was still interested, or the developer were still interested in pursuing that change?
We wouldn't, we would not continue on with the City Council regarding the mapping error issue, but we would put it on the list basically for the next appropriate Comprehensive Plan update.
And could it be done in conjunction with a site review, or does it have to be done with the Comp Plan update?
It has to be done with the Comp Plan update.
Okay, great, thank you. Other questions?
Yeah. On Attachment D, where you have the public input and comments that came in when the packet went out, I believe, on page, it says 65 of 88, and it was sent from Alan Delamere, and it says the loss of open space other. And in the third sentence below that, it says, in the May 5th site review, in the May 5th site review staff reports, staff stated in their findings that OSO designation at 31, this is going to be a long night, at 311 Mapleton was not a mapping error. So, I think he might have meant at the concept review. Was that right? Or could you address that?
Hi, Elaine McLaughlin. I'm case manager on the applications, and Mr. Delamere may have been referring to staff comments rather than staff memo.
And is that an accurate station, statement? Staff said not a mapping error?
We did provide that comment.
And what was the, what caused the staff to change from that comment to now recommending and finding?
Oh, oh, no, 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 no. As a point of clarification, there was no definitive statement that it wasn't an error. However, it was after May 5th that we got additional information from parcel mapping from the county, former county parcel maps. We dug deeper, and this has been part of the review process, where we need to be able to spend time looking at it. But at the time, we were considering doing it as a Comp Plan land use part of the update. And then, given the timeline of that, we proceeded with continuing on through the site review, if that makes any sense.
Yeah.
I do believe that quite literally about a week or two after those comments went out is when the Open Space Mountain Park staff received those parcel maps that I mentioned, which was the first kind of thing that we discovered with this, so the timing was a bit off there.
Thank you.
Other questions, Crystal?
Yeah, I, could you put up the slide with the 1981 map, Phil? And could you identify, I mean, I sound like a prosecutor here. Could you identify Third Street, please, on that map? Can anyone identify? I can't, I just can't read it, which, where Third Street is on the map.
Pretty hard to read, but I believe it's, is it there?
You can't see your mouse. I don't think we're seeing that, unfortunately. It may need to point.
Well, I'll tell you why I'm asking for that and why I think it's significant, is Mr. Kraykraff in the 1976 minutes, and thank you so much for getting all that information together. I totally found it fascinating. But he talked about the development west of Third Street, that any new development that they were recommending to the planning board would be handled, that wasn't in the properties that they bought. You're shaking your head like you actually know what I'm talking about, that the properties to the west of Third Street that weren't bought by open space as part of that big larger discussion that they recommend planning board look at as part of a PUD, and to then negotiate with whoever came in for an annexation or a development, the possibility of including that in the site review. So that's why I was interested in where Third Street was, because I kept trying to track it. Fourth Street's easy to track. Third Street's a little bit harder. Would you? Thank you.
May I introduce Bethany Collins of Open Space Mountain Park? She provided the research that you're referring to.
Welcome, Bethany.
The, the minutes from that board meeting basically are the designation of the eastern boundary from Mapleton all the way to Linden. So, thirds, the subdivision or the proposed NUPUD they're talking about, I believe, related to Third Street in that discussion, are actually north towards Linden, and maybe what eventually became the Alvin New property for open space, but at the time was, excuse me, I am also sick, was also planned for development. So, a lot of that discussion was also surrounding the time that they were developing Pine Brook Hills or coming into, to applications on that, as well as that Alvin New subdivision, excuse me, to the north.
Well, he did talk about four to Delwood, but there's also the other, I mean, it wasn't defined as being just north. It was west of Third Street.
Correct, but, but Third Street never, yeah, didn't show up as bisecting the 311 site, yes.
I could reread it later on.
Right.
I'll read Mr. Kraykraff's comment.
We'll come back to the comments later.
Thank you.
Bethany, while you're here, I actually had a couple of specifically OSMP questions for you. The first is, is the trail access there at the parking lot on this site, is that designated as an official access point by the department?
It is shown on maps because it is, it is an access point onto, from private land onto city land. We do have, people will say we have signage and garbage cans. They are on city property on the other side of the access point, and it was, it is likely listed on maps to show the visitation use at the time the West Trail Study Area came out, or the, the use and the access point onto city open space at that point. And it is anticipated to remain as part of this development.
That sounds good. So, just as a follow-up question, is there any designation in the West Trail Study Area or other? or other planning documents that there would be any city improvements to the site to turn it into a formal trailhead or provide city parking on the site?
None at all.
And then the other, actually, two more questions. The first, is this site in the OSMP's acquisition plan?
It is not.
It is not? And then, some of the mail, maps that Phil showed, showed a little piece, in fact, it's on there now, the Dakota Ridge Trail being somewhat on this parcel. Does the city have easements or other, you know, interest to kind of guarantee the use of that trail?
We do not. That's actually the last segment. So we did negotiate one when the trailhead subdivision went in over that portion, because there was a trail easement, but the trail wasn't actually in the easement. So during that subdivision, we did negotiate a trail easement over that. And during this, during our comments and our work during site plan review, we are negotiating with the applicant, and they have agreed to convey to the city a public access easement over both that segment as well as an informal social trail that, right now, parallels the Silver Lake Ditch. It's not shown in this, mostly because, again, it's not a formalized trail. So they, so those will be kept and under city management and enforcement.
Terrific. Thank you. Does anyone else have questions for Bethany while she's up, so we don't have her bopping up and down?
Oh, I can.
So, Crystal?
I do. Bethany, I was on the Open Space Board from 1996 to 2001, and there was a policy that there would not be acquisitions in Area 1, Area 1 being the annexed areas of the city. And I was thinking back, I can only remember one, and it didn't happen when I was on the Open Space Board, it was prior, and that was to provide a trail easement up to Dakota Ridge. I was trying, I couldn't think of it was, what it was. It might have been the Goat Trail, but I don't know which one it was. But, but, so that policy of not acquiring in Area 1 has not changed?
It has not. Our acquisition update focuses us on the Boulder Valley Comp Planning Area, which is Area 3.
Yeah. And then I believe, Phil, is this whole area in the annexed area of the city?
The entire site's in the city.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for staff? Peter? Thanks, Phil. To make sure I get it right, this all comes down to an inaccurately mapped ditch creek?
We, really, there were two overarching reasons that we felt it was an error. One was the ditch mapping, and the other was, really, it came down to OSMP's historical knowledge of how we have acquired and looked at open space acquisitions and the written documentation around those decisions, leading, you know, historically in this area. And so there's not one piece here or there. It's kind of 50 pieces that, to us, make it clear.
The staff feels that the intent was always to trace the boundary of the ditch.
That's what we believe.
Okay, thanks. Other questions? David?
On that line, though, I guess, just to the north, there is a section to the east of the ditch that was acquired as open space. So there is some acquired open space to the east of the ditch, just north of there, right?
I'd have to look at the specific properties, but there are some open space other properties north of here. It's not shown.
Acquired, I meant.
Or open space other properties that we have, yeah, that I believe are east of the ditch.
No, but what, actually, I was, I'm referring to the triangle just north of the OSO circle there, the oval. If you go straight north to the green above that, that is open space acquired, but it actually goes to the east of the ditch.
Oh, okay.
So, and if I, you know, if I look on the map link, I can see that, in fact, there is a little triangle to the east of the ditch that was acquired. I guess that was acquired probably back in the 70s or 80s, but.
I believe that was the 90s, but I.
Oh, 95, okay. All right. Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you. Crystal?
Could you go back to the previous slide, Phil? Yeah, that one. So the Boulder Junior Academy site is, see where the top of the open space other then starts jutting directly to the east, right south of that line? Is that the Boulder Junior Academy site? Where is the Boulder Junior Academy site on there?
It's here.
Oh, okay, right there. So the area, when that was being discussed and negotiated, one of the most important things to a lot of people was that that steep, that that sloped area not have any buildings encroaching on it and that it be left open. And so it seems like the view from below, like, east of Fourth Street was important when some of these things were being designated and looked at. Is that true, or were you here for the Boulder Junior Academy?
I was, I was here.
Oh, great.
And as far as I remember, the Junior Academy site actually only included just that subdivided area, and the area to the west of that is city-owned land.
But it, but the steep, the slope that comes down was owned by Boulder Junior Academy. Yeah. They did or they didn't? Well, anyway, I just went by there, and it didn't look like they built on the slope. They built on the gentle part of the slope.
They built on their property? They didn't build on the city?
Right. But at the back of their property was a sloping area.
You mean to the, to the western side of those subdivided lots? I don't remember that in detail, sorry.
Maybe someone does here. Yeah.
Any other questions for staff?
This is the slope.
I had one more, which just related to picking up on one of Bethany's points.
Oh, I see.
If the board does conclude there was a mapping error, or even if it doesn't, what's the ability to protect access through the site as part of the site review process, knowing that this current, currently private property, and so we don't have a property right there? What rights or ability do we have to protect that process through the site review process? Hello?
You mean access through the site?
Access through the site to the open space parcel. Preserve that access point. On the existing trail? To the existing trail. So to, to the, basically across the ditch and into the open space. Like to change what's there now, or to preserve it as it is? Either, either one, I think, at this point, just to, you know, I know there was interest in the public about protection of that point, and, you know, part of the question is, A, what does this decision tonight have to do with that? And B, you know, how will that necessarily be affected in the site review?
I think the decision tonight does not have anything to do with that. There are, based on my analysis, no access rights through the site. It is private property. And in the site review, it comes down to site review criteria application, and then also an analysis, looking at constitutional implications of takings, and is the development creating an impact that requires a dedication to compensate for that impact? And I suspect that's not a strong case in this particular case.
But the developer could negotiate that and offer that voluntarily as part of a site review package?
Well, I mean, a person could always gift something to the city, I guess.
Bethany, did you have something you wanted to add on that point? Okay, good. Terrific, thank you.
Just a question on that. So if I got this right, a developer can ask for a height modification, a parking reduction, a vacation of public right-of-ways, but we can't consider a dedication of open space unless it's voluntarily done, or of the part of their property? Did I misunderstand what you were saying?
Well, I mean, the site review has to be decided based on the site review criteria. So there is no site review criteria that specifically states you have to dedicate open space and.
Right.
And the site review criteria we have also have to be interpreted in light of the Constitution, and, and what may, and may not be required may also depend on the type of development proposed on a particular site.
When I said open space, I meant open spaces, we define it within our Title IX, which is not necessarily the public open space.
Oh, usable open space for the users of the site? Yes, I can, that certainly is required under the code.
So thank you.
Any other quick? David?
Well, just to review the language from the OSBT, they recommend continuing to work through the development review process to pursue the conveyance of permanent rights over the Dakota Ridge Trail corridor and area around the Silver Lake Ditch. That, to me, indicates that they're signaling to the development review process that they would like to see some sort of permanent solution towards protecting at least that corridor along the Dakota Ridge Trail and the, and the ditch. Is that reasonable? And that, so that there are those public signals out there that, that at least they as a body, and perhaps we will say that tonight, too, would like to see that, at least. Okay. Is that a nod?
I think, I think there's some hesitation in not getting into the site plan review discussion.
Of course.
But that is, that is a nod. We have been, again, as we work through the site plan review process, been discussing those trail corridors and permanent easements over the trails I mentioned, as well as the access point you were talking about. So far, we have, we have talked about that, that public pedestrian traffic would likely be allowed to and from the site at that access point, if that helps answer your question. It would, however, be subject to a man, a private management plan of the site, so they could close it down in the evenings, open it up. They would have to enforce that threshold, basically. But in order to allow their residents onto, through that access point, we also would require the public to be able to go the other way.
Yeah. And there's the access point, but there's also, you know, kind of a nice little buffer of trees on the private property side of the ditch that could be, I mean, of course, I would expect probably that it would be kept that way, but.
Correct. And we, we, Open Space, if the easement along the ditch, if and when the easement along the ditch is conveyed, then that access point would be subject to Open Space rules and regs, because it would be within the managed easement. And I will also say that all of these items have been discussed and reviewed with and without consideration for this land use designation. So it would be, it would be things, whether that green was there, that we would, that we, as members of DRC and reviewers, would be looking at.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Bethany. With that, why don't we turn then to the public hearing, which, thank you all for your patience, and thank you all for coming out tonight. So just a few. Thank you. Great, thank you. Sorry for that brief interruption. So Cindy was just handing me the folks who are signed up so far to speak. If anybody is interested, join the gentleman with what looks like an Amherst sweatshirt. I went to Williams, so I'm not sure I can condone that, but, but I do appreciate you joining us. But if anyone else would like to sign up, please do follow on here. So what we're gonna do is, I'm gonna call you up in the order that Cindy has identified. I understand a number of you have worked together to kind of have a continuous presentation. We're gonna kind of call you individually up on that, and then the PowerPoint slides hopefully will work in sequence. A few of you are pooling time, because we do have a limit of three minutes. If you pool with somebody, you can get five. If you pool with two people, you could get seven. I will need to check that the person you're pooling with is here, so I'll look for a little wave of the hand there, and I'll wave back. And then if, we'll work through that list. I'll try to call people to be on the on-deck circle here, just so we can keep things moving along, which we appreciate. There may be opportunities where the board may have questions, and we'll just kind of shout out when we do. So just know that that's a possibility that's out there. And then, once we do go through the rotation, I'll do a last call to see if anybody else would like to speak, and at that point, we'll close the hearing and bring it back to the board for their deliberation. Couple other pieces, just for a little bit of housekeeping when you do come up. If you can give your name and address to the record, I know we have it on here, but some of the folks, especially watching for beyond, it's good to know. And then my fellow board members don't always have these sheets, so it's helpful to know where folks are from. And then for everybody in the audience, we really do care to hear from everybody tonight, and so if you have things that you're thinking about with the speaker, please let's keep them in a non-auditory sort of way. You know, if you want to wave your hands because you like it, that's great. If you want to give me a frowny face, that's great, too. But just as a matter of respect, and to make sure we hear everybody, if you could just keep it silent, that would be greatly appreciated. So no clapping, booing, bird songs, anything else like that, we greatly appreciate it. So with that, I think the person who is leading us off tonight is Wendy Baringold, if I have the name pronounced correctly, and if I don't apologize.
Yeah, you do.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening. Thanks for being here. My name is Wendy Baringold, and I live at 536 Maxwell Ave. And I'm here tonight to introduce our group and set the stage for our presentation. And it comes to you with a welcome assist from Cindy, who's been fabulous. And first of all, I would like to tell you who we are not, as has been described in the ever-colorful opinion section of the Daily Camera. We are not millionaires who object to multimillionaires moving into the neighborhood. In fact, the concept of a congregate care facility in and of itself is not objectionable, though we would prefer that if it is to be built, it be available to people with a range of incomes. We are not entitled oldies who want to have our own private parking lot at Dakota Ridge. In fact, we walk from our homes. It's the parents and little kids and those that live at a distance from Newlands, East Boulder, or other points that use the Maxwell Street access in the parking lot. We are not disgruntled neighbors drumming up falsehoods to derail a much-needed senior housing complex. Rather, we are an evolving collection of neighbors who have been working to address the negative impacts of this project since it was introduced in 2015. We represent the concerns of many, many individuals and groups from Boulder and beyond who strenuously object to this project as proposed. The idea is not a problem. It never has been. It's the implementation. This place is enormous. Can I have my slide? Is it here? Okay, sorry. Okay, sorry.
And we'll put a little more time on the clock to account for AV issues.
Maybe it's gone. Okay. So, there we go. There we go. Cindy found it. Yeah, there, great. Okay. So the place is enormous. It has 32 buildings. It's four times bigger than the Academy on Aurora. It dwarfs Chautauqua in both size and scale, and proposes to create a total footprint of built environment that will be equivalent in area to five and a half football fields, and that's not including the underground parking garages. The enormity is staggering, and we feel it's egregious. The OSO issue on the table tonight is only one of the numerous overreaches assumed by these developers to achieve their aggressive business model, which we feel is predicated on personal profit at the expense of public good. There's more, and we'll be back in April to address other issues. But we're here tonight to affirm the accuracy of the OSO boundary as defined since the 70s, to reaffirm both the open space to reaffirm both the open space values and the deeply felt public benefit of this parcel. We hold, we have not come to these conclusions lightly or hastily. Our evidence is the result of hundreds of hours of research and documentation drawn from the Carnegie Library, archives from our neighbors at the Seventh Day Adventist Church, the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, the City Code, and untold time exploring the site itself. Though some of our views differ from those of the staff, we feel that they are well-founded, and they serve the broad interests of our community and are in accordance with our City Code, which provides that the public interests are favored over those of private individuals. So, we thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Baringold, and I would very much like to thank you for thanking Cindy, because she does, A, she is fabulous, and B, she does work really hard to make sure people...
We couldn't have done it without her.
Great, so I think next up is Russell Henriksen. Okay, and we'll be pooling with Lynn Siegel and Guy Figaro. Welcome, Figers, okay, sorry about that. Welcome.
Now, I may need a little Cindy help, it looks like it's, I'm sorry, we shut this, but we should keep the lid open, man?
Oh, yes, please. Oh, keep the screen open.
I'll put my notes here, I guess. I'm trying not to touch anything.
And after Mr. Henriksen is Roger Koenig. Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Russell Henriksen. My wife and I live at 645 Concord. The eastern boundary of Dakota Ridge stretches from the flatlands of our city westward to the mountain parks. It serves as a buffer, both ecological and visual. The open space pioneers knew the city backdrop was vital to our town and needed to be protected. In 1970, over 2,800 citizens petitioned city council to protect Dakota Ridge from Linden to Mapleton avenues. This included the four acres of OSO. In September 1976, the OSBT met on a non-binding resolution discussed by Phil Kleisler. On page four of Jim Robertson's letter to this board, that motion was described as having been, quote, "confusing language that could have been interpreted different ways." So, we agree and focus instead on the binding 1977 Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, which was revised in 1978. The actions by the OSBT became irrelevant when the four bodies passed this plan. The joint agreement firmly established the areas intended for preservation along Dakota Ridge. The map and legend of the Comp Plan is shown on the left and in a large section on the right. The proposed areas for open space stretch from Linden to Mapleton all the way down to Third Street. The 311 site is outlined in red. A substantial portion of the proposed open space is east of the ditch. There's no indication that the ditch had any meaning in open space decisions that would affect 311 Mapleton. The 1977-78 Comp Plan affirms the intentions of the city to protect the mountain backdrop. These intentions were confirmed by the city's actions in ensuing years. The city's 2018 E-MAP shows the early plans to protect the mountain backdrop were accomplished. They acquired the Herseller property to the north. From Forest to Alpine, they placed OSO and OSDR designations on the western portion of all 28 lots, as outlined in purple. These are developed lots, just like the four acres of OSO. Next, between Alpine and 311 Mapleton, they acquired the land east of the ditch, as outlined in pink. And finally, they placed the OSO designation on the four acres at 311 Mapleton. Collectively, these actions were used to preserve Dakota Ridge from further development. So, why didn't the city acquire the four acres? In the 1976 trustee meeting, Mr. Walker stated, quote, "If we approach an owner and he does not want to sell, and there's no threat of development, we'll put it on the back shelf." Well, there's been no threat of development on these four acres for over 70 years, and residents have had access to the property and use of the parking lot, so with no motivation to acquire the four acre sat on the back shelf. All that changed with the recent owners' development plans. So, what do we know? We know that the 1977-78 Comp Plan, that the Silver Lake Ditch is not the eastern boundary between Alpine and Mapleton. This makes any mapping error of the ditch irrelevant. We know this designation is consistent with the rest of Dakota Ridge, and we know the city both preserved and acquired land east of the ditch. Staff's assertion that they are not interested in property east of the ditch is disproved by the city's very own actions. We know that these four acres of OSO have been protected and included in every Comp Plan since the 1970s for over 40 years, and the public's relied on it, including all of our new homeowners at trailhead. We know that both the Boulder County Land Use and the Open Space Board of Trustees disagreed with Staff's assertion that this four acres of OSO is, quote, "clearly a map error," unquote. And finally, we know that these four acres are part of the mountain backdrop that's become an iconic image of our city. It stands as a legacy to the efforts of over 2,800 involved citizens in 1970 in the city council that supported them, to those on the governing bodies, including this board, responsible for the 1977-78 Comp Plan, and to the vision of all those who saw the mountain backdrop of Boulder as a precious resource to be preserved and protected. Please say no to Staff's initiative to have this designation changed. Now, I added one item, and it's on page three of my handout. And it looks like this, okay? And I don't have it on the board, so if you could turn to this page. And this is page 13 of the Staff's presentation. So, I'll leave you, or perhaps Phil, with a question. Staff's map at the bottom asserts that an incorrect ditch location from a 1979 parcel map caused the OSO. The map above and to the left shows proposed open space in 1978. How can the proposed open space within the 311 site in red be created a year before the map was made? Thank you so much. Let me just point one other thing out. The notion that the ditch error came first, and then the OSO was placed on it, it's just as likely that the OSO, with various incarnations of open space planning, came first, and then someone erroneously thought that the eastern side of that green thing would be the ditch. So, the fact that the ditch is in the location is not determinative at all. But thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Henriksen. Next up, Mr. Koenig.
Thank you, I'm Roger Koenig, 909 Mapleton Avenue. Oh, you had extra slides, okay. So, Citizens for Sanitas is modeled after the legacy of citizens from Enchanted Mesa and the Dakota Ridge Committee, that we are all grateful to for having created this open space in the '60s and the '70s. And what we're here tonight is to start out fact versus conjecture, and I view this as a formal procedure, and there is a formal legal term that will be hopefully clarified by the city attorney's office, which is whether the word "clear" and a clear error and what that means in terms of legal definition, in terms of your deliberations. So, I'm going to focus on that. We've, just a point of clarification on the actual practice of open space other, is that it is used not only as aspirational, but as protective, as we see along the boundary of Fourth and Third Street, where the backyards are protected. As open space other, the developer clearly knows it's open space, they filed that in their application. And the center of the dispute and discussions over the last year with Staff has been the assertion that, as we see in the letter to the county, that there was an erroneous parcel map that caused the boundary of the open space to be defined. And as Chon County refuted that and said that they were not clear, and resubmitted the Drum map as an alternative map. And tonight, we have actually a third map in the presentation from Phil here, that indicates that he's using reference to a map that he believes was a correct map in the 1976 discussion. So, he's recreated, tried to recreate the boundary based on the current GIS map, but yet, all during this past year, Phil and the staff have emphatically promoted that the boundary was created due to a mapping error. So, now, at this presentation, we have not only the mapping error from Staff, but the current GIS map, and we have the Drum map from the county. So, what this results in is uncertainty, and the other key factor in that uncertainty is that the open space boundary doesn't actually follow...
I know you got tripped up a little beginning. If you could wrap it up in about 15 seconds, that'd be great.
It doesn't actually follow the, any of the maps on Silver Lake. Phil Nellomir did the analysis. It follows segmented lines, surveyed lines, so why would the actual GIS map follow surveyed lines if it was an error? Somebody purposely surveyed the open space designation that exists in our maps today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Koenig. Next up is Ken Dunn. Welcome. And you are pooling with Allison Vigors, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Ken Dunn, I live at 811 Mapleton Avenue. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the preservation of the open space other designation, and for your service on this board. There's three compelling reasons for this board to not abandon the OSO designation for this property. First, as been mentioned, the legal standard required to repeal has not been met. Second, retention as OSO is consistent with the open space mission statement and the city charter. And third, a vote to repeal this designation is a vote to permanently abandon critically needed safe parking at Sanitas. The Boulder Valley Comp Plan authorizes this board to abandon an OSO designation only upon concluding that the designation is clearly a drafting error, mapping discrepancy, or clerical error. That clear error standard has not been met with respect to this parcel for three reasons. First, there's many maps, notes, and open space meeting minutes just projected on the screens for viewing and entered into the public record that establish the intent to designate this parcel as OSO when preservation activities for Dakota Ridge were initiated in the '60s and '70s. Disregarding this historical evidence and intent violates the clear error requirement of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. Second, as was mentioned, the Boulder County staff carefully reviewed this issue and concluded that although it was plausible that the OSO designation may have been due to a mapping error, they were unable to conclude that this designation was clearly an error. They studied it carefully, they couldn't reach that conclusion. Third, as was mentioned, the open space trustees, after reviewing the same 40-page memo submitted to you, and hearing public testimony, were unwilling to endorse the staff recommendation that the OSO designation was a clear error. In fact, the motion that passed the trustees, as was shown on the board here, just as the county had, concluded that the designation was, quote, "probably, but not clearly, a mapping error," end quote. Based upon these facts, the record establishes that the clear error requirement for abandoning the OSO designation for this parcel has not been met. A vote otherwise risks being found arbitrary and capricious from an administrative law standpoint. The second reason the OSO designation should be retained is that the city and county determined this parcel was consistent with the open space mission and city charter when it was designated in the '60s and '70s, and that OSO designation remains consistent with the guiding principles today. Again, if the OSO designation resulted from a clear error, one would expect that designation and the character of the underlying land to be inconsistent with the mission and charter. In fact, the OSO designation fits nicely within the preservation and land management goals captured by these documents. I had the privilege, as did two others on the board in front of me, of serving as a trustee for Boulder's open space mountain parks from 2002 to 2007, and I have the highest regard for the staff and their work. However, it's my opinion that preserving this parcel as OSO is consistent with both the mission, the open space mission and city charter. My written submission, as well as subsequent presenters, will articulate the ways that preserving this designation will serve the required open space purposes. And lastly, the third reason this board should not vote to abandon the OSO designation is it would increase the danger to open space visitors arising from the critical shortage of safe parking near Sanitas. Public safety has appropriately been the most critical variable in land management decisions in Boulder, and is highly relevant to your decision on whether to abandon the OSO designation for this parcel. Again, subsequent presenters will describe the parking dangers arising from the abandonment of the OSO designation. Thank you again for the opportunity to describe the three, we think, compelling reasons for your consideration on why you should not vote to abandon the OSO designation for this parcel. First, the clear error legal standard has not been met. Second, retention is consistent with the open space mission statement and the city charter. And third, critical and immediate safety concerns arising from a shortage of safe parking at Sanitas will be exacerbated by abandoning the OSO designation. The Boulder Visionaries in the '60s who established a dedicated sales tax to purchase and protect our open space have succeeded beyond their wildest expectations.
Could you finish up your thought?
Okay, retaining the OSO designation for this four-acre parcel is legally required by the Comp Plan and will preserve the legacy of those early open space mountain park pioneers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Next up is Randy Stroh. Welcome, Ms. Stroh.
Good evening, my name is Randy Stroh, and I live at 821 Mapleton Avenue. I've lived in Boulder since 1973, all of that time west of Ninth Street. I am very familiar with the evolution of Sanitas in my years here and the corresponding issues surrounding public access to the trail system. I have witnessed the steady increase in popularity of Sanitas in the surrounding area, and have enjoyed the wide spectrum of users and visitors who are drawn here. The Boulder Seventh Day Adventist Church has been happy to share daytime parking on the 311 Mapleton site ever since it built the sanitarium, and when Boulder Memorial Hospital was in full use, it was open daytime parking all the time as well. With the current site review application, all of that public parking goes away. Also, the upper parking lot on the 311 OSO, which has been used regularly by Sanitas hikers for such a long time, would also no longer be available. This complete flip from open to fully closed vehicular access would leave Sanitas parking to only include a few striped spots near the Fourth and Mapleton trailhead, the Centennial parking lot at the base of Settlers Park, a lot which is full by 8:00 AM most days, including weekdays, and street parking in the nearby residential neighborhoods. Parking along Sunshine Canyon Road is unsafe because of the narrow shoulders and winding curves at the bottom, and thus, the concept of improving baseline to ease parking at Chautauqua simply is not a feasible idea here. It is unsustainable to suspect that the oldest street grid in Boulder, a street grid which was built for the horse and buggy, to become the default for parking overflow when there is an obvious opportunity to help mitigate it with the retention of OSO on the 311 site. The website, YourBoulder, the Boulder County Colorado Lifestyle, referred in 2015 to Mount Sanitas as, quote, "everybody's mountain." "For many locals, past and present," it quoted, "Mount Sanitas is the very heart of Boulder open space." You are hearing tonight how and why you have many other true and very legitimate reasons to keep this 311... to keep this 311 OSO designation intact. But please also consider the irreversible consequences that would result if you vote to change how this parcel functions now and if you eliminate the potential which 311 OSO holds for the future. Please preserve the possibility of public benefit here, benefit which has been a long held core value for both Boulder and for this site. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stroh. Next up, Betsy J. Welcome, Ms. J.
Good evening. I'm Betsy J., and I live at 429 Mapleton, Apartment B. Opportunities come in different forms. And as we've seen in the past, when the city nearly lost Enchanted Mesa, sometimes opportunity comes in the form of threatened development. This OSO parcel has valuable assets that benefit the public: a view of the mountain backdrop, access to public trails, containment of a steep slope undisturbed by development, access to historic sites, including the stone shelter, the bench, the bridge, the arch folly, and Silver Lake Ditch; 36 existing parking spaces, which more than doubles the 32 spaces in City's Centennial Lot off Sunshine Canyon. Those are existing parking spaces. And the 1930 three-story brick building described by Winter and Company as, quote, "distinction in the development of the community of Boulder associated with health, natural foods, and wellness." Now, there is something to get excited about. The Maxwell Building is part of a fascinating legacy of health and wellness. In the years after it was built, hundreds of nursing students gratefully moved from tents and unheated cottages to the comfort of this building. At the turn of the century, Boulder Sanitarium founder, Dr. Kellogg, had invented cornflakes, peanut butter, and granola. And today, we are a city bursting with health food entrepreneurs and investors, healthcare practitioners, professional athletes, and active citizens. Let's imagine how this site might help enhance this wonderful reputation. Or consider the building's possibilities as an educational center. Our beloved Chautauqua Ranger Cottage is overflowing. The Maxwell Building could provide needed space for exhibits and programs by rangers and volunteers. You've already heard that county planning staff could not quite go along with the ditch theory. It just didn't hold water. The Open Space Board of Trustees could not really confirm a clear error. And nearly 1,000 citizens, many of whom are watching now on Channel 8, signed our petition, which will be presented to you tonight, want this open space other parcel to remain protected as is. Hopefully, you will decide to do no harm. Leave things the way they have been for decades. Open Space and Mountain Parks Department just launched their master plan, focusing on best uses for land throughout the system. Right now, they are seeking robust public engagement. Well, here we are. You are only too familiar with Boulder's robust public engagement, but thank goodness. Without it, we wouldn't have Enchanted Mesa. We wouldn't have Settlers Park. We wouldn't have the Green Belt open space, the height limiter, the blue line. These define our beautiful city. I hope that you uphold these deeply cherished values. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. J. Rebecca Trafton?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Rebecca Trafton, and I live on 4th Street. Russell Hendrickson has presented definitive proof of the eastern boundary of the OSO land on Dakota Ridge, promoting our mountain backdrop, a number-one priority for the city of Boulder. His story began more than 50 years ago, but my story begins even further, 100 years ago. In 1910, Frederick Olmsted Jr., whom you will see, Frederick Olmsted Jr., the greatest designer of park systems in American landscape history, delivered a report to the Boulder City Improvement Association. But Olmsted Jr. spoke not of designed landscapes, but of what he called "our mountain parks." He writes, quote, "In the great tract of unspoiled foothill scenery, Boulder has a priceless," there we go, "a priceless possession." Thank you, Mr. Olmsted Jr. "We have little specific advice to offer beyond the caution not to spoil what beautiful nature has provided. On the foothills of Boulder, beside the intrinsic beauty of color and form and texture, in the wonderfully sculptured surfaces of earth, in the rock masses, and in the vegetation, beside the impression of spaciousness and freedom derived from the height of the peaks, the depth of the valleys, and the breadth of the sweeping outlook over miles of varied open plain, there is beyond all that a sense of escape from the tiresome evidences of the human management of everything in sight, which pervades all civilized life and especially life in cities. The more highly civilized our life becomes, and the more skillfully and perfectly all our affairs are managed by human agencies, the more we come to value the means of securing occasional relief from the insistent pressure of human contact and control. Therefore, the one principle before all others that should control the management of Boulder City Forest in the foothills is to avoid every single thing that would obtrude the idea of human control of the scenery." When Olmsted concludes his remarks, he exhorts that we not, quote, "ruin the highest value possessed by the whole city forest," namely that when you get into it, you pass into a different world from the city, into a place of quiet mountain scenery, remote and vast, where the weary can find peace. I implore you to heed this wisdom. Respect the decisions our visionary city leaders made 50 years ago. Protect every acre of every designation of open space land forever." Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Trafton. Next up is Phil Delamere.
Phil Delamere. I live at 2740 Fourth Street. Knowing that many interested parties wouldn't be able to come to the meeting to speak themselves, we followed the footsteps of our forbearers and launched a citizens' initiative in the form of a petition. In less than a month, we have collected over 900 signatures with respondents from ZIP codes across Boulder into the surrounding communities. The numbers are growing. These signers are in the room with us. Their voices are here and must be heard. The petition reads, "To the members of the Boulder City Council Planning Board and Open Space Trustees, February 2018. We, the undersigned, urge you to maintain the current open space other OSO designation on the four-plus acre parcel at the northwest corner of the 15-acre 311 Mapleton property and thereby protect this historic eastern gateway to the Sanitas Valley. By doing so, you will honor the resolution to preserve all Dakota Ridge from Mapleton to Linden Avenues, which was adopted in the 1970s by City Council at the request of the Dakota Ridge Committee and the 2,857 petitioners. Support the ongoing public use of the parcel for vehicular and pedestrian access up Maxwell Street west of 4th Street. Maintain the upper parking lot to alleviate pressure on the street parking in adjacent neighborhoods. Utilize this parcel to shape the development of the city, to limit urban sprawl and to discipline growth. Prevent excavation and development of this steep slope and to minimize the danger of mudslides on those homes below. Sustain existing cultural and environmental resources on this historic portion of the Dakota Ridge open space. Protect Boulder's iconic mountain backdrop. Preserve this land for its continued contribution, excuse me, to the quality of life of the community. City of Boulder Charter, 1986, open space purposes, open space land." Thank you. So we urge you to please do no harm. Maintain the OSO protective status. Let the master plan unfold that considered and legitimate decisions can be made about the ways this parcel can best be used to benefit the whole Boulder community. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Delamere. So next up, we have Gary Nolan, followed by Tom Moore. Mr. Nolan, welcome. Welcome, Mr. Nolan.
Thank you. I've lived in Boulder for 60 years. I was asked to speak tonight as a longtime member of the Adventist community in Boulder. Adventists have had a long association with Mapleton Hill. The Boulder Colorado Sanitarium was completed in 1896 with strong support from Dr. John Harvey Kellogg of Battle Creek, Michigan. Before the establishment of the Boulder Sanitarium, the first Seventh Day Adventist Church in Colorado was built in 1880 at Broadway and Mapleton. The second location in Boulder was at 7th and Highland. The third, present location, is at 4th and Mapleton. My mother moved from Nebraska in 1959 to work at what had become Boulder Memorial Hospital. The name change was only a couple of years before, but people still called it "The San." We found this bottle among my mother's belongings. On one side is printed "Sanitarium Dairy Boulder, Colorado." On the other side, it says "Cottage Cheese." So I've chosen to focus on the dairy tonight. The concrete ruins on the shelf above Trailhead subdivision are the remains of the dairy barn. The ruins are on the three-acre parcel below Silver Lake Ditch, next to the four-acre parcel being discussed tonight and are pertinent to the discussion. Recently, Dale Williamson, a longtime member of the Boulder Adventist Church, shared with me his recollections about the dairy. He may be the last living person who worked at the dairy. He worked there as a teenager and performed all the tasks associated with the dairy, including washing the milk cans that were used to deliver milk to the sanitarium and to Watts Hardy Dairy. The haymow had a hardwood floor unusual for a barn. The barn was torn down about 1953. The hardwood was then used by the buyer in a couple of new houses. The rest of the lumber was purchased by one of the pioneer families south of Boulder. The concrete that remains was where the milking took place and represents only the north half of the original barn. When it was time in the evening to bring the cows to the barn, they were usually in the furthest part of the pasture. But it was pleasant riding along on a horse behind them as the cows made their way back to the barn in single file. When Dale first worked there, the dairy had two bulls and a sturdy steel pen. The neighborhood boys liked to tease the bulls and get them riled. The dairy sold the bulls because of safety concerns. Everyone I've talked to, associated with the church, is pleased that the plans call for keeping the smokestack. I would like to see the barn ruins protected, stabilized, and improved. An explanatory sign would be great. So I encourage you as a city and for the developers to preserve as much of that remaining heritage of the sanitarium as possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Next up, Tom Moore. And after Mr. Moore, Suzanne DeLucia. Welcome, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. Thank you for holding this hearing, and thanks to you folks for making Boulder work. We know it's hard work, albeit unpaid. I'm also pleased about the previous speaker because I've been wondering about the ruins of the dairy for a long time. Regarding the development plans for the old Adventist Hospital site on Mapleton, I urge you to maintain the open space designation on the four-acre section in the northwest of the 15 acres slated for development. You folks know the value of open space for wildlife and humans. It seems like Boulder staff is working for development and developers with their 37-page report urging OSO be abandoned. I certainly don't see it as a mapping error. The developers had ample opportunity to challenge the mapping and OSO designation before they purchased the 15-acre parcel. There is lots of space designated open space open along the ditch, but only now that there are big bucks in a project does it become an error. I don't think that there are any words in the documents associated with this parcel to indicate that the ditch is the eastern edge of the parcel. I'd say that the map is the final indicator demarking the open space other, and there's no reason to call it an error. Let's keep the four acres for wild creatures and public use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next up, Suzanne DeLucia, followed by Michael Bosma.
I'm Suzanne. Thank you for being here. I'm Suzanne DeLucia, 86 Mineola Court. I think I'm the first person from outside of the neighborhood to speak, but I am a petition signer, and several of my neighbors have joined us. They chose not to speak tonight. You probably knew us from the SEPNHOGEN-PANCAUS situation. This is a citywide situation, so we felt compelled to come. But when we heard that there were mapping errors, and while it's not exactly the same situation, throughout the HOGEN-PANCAUS process, there were errors that we felt very, that never got corrected, that we kept pointing out, and had the development gone through, we were fearful that those errors would have played into it. So that was an impetus to come. But there's a lot of pressure on development, and some areas should just be kept as minimally developed as possible. This is one of them. It's one of the most popular areas in town. Developers often call the people surrounding the area who are fighting at NIMBYs, and I don't think that's the case at all. These are people who care about it. There's real community benefit to keeping this area as nature-friendly, open, et cetera, as possible. It's already too busy. Putting more people, more pressure on the land, taking it away, complicating the parking isn't going to help. I'm a cyclist, and I come down, barreling down Sunshine Canyon sometimes, and if you put more people on that road, somebody is going to get very hurt or killed. I was amazed on Mr. Olmsted Jr.'s words, and I ask you to honor them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeLucia. Next up is Michael Bosma. And you're pooling with Robert Haas. Is Mr. Haas here? Welcome.
You want to pass? Go ahead and pass that out. Okay. Cool. I have a brief Michael Bosma 1885 quince. I am a representative of the ownership group. While this isn't an issue that was brought forward by us, I do feel that it is something that should be cleared up, and I think staff has done a great job in their analysis of this site. So what I did is I put together basically what I believe to be a four-page document straight from staff's report that I think addresses the issues at hand that we're dealing with tonight. On the first page, you'll notice that I've highlighted in pink the incorrect location of the map taken from page five of the 88-page report. It's pretty convincing that the ditch has never run on the east side of what we call the nurse's dormitory building. It's never been there. It wouldn't be possible for the ditch to be located there. But what we do see is that in highlighted in yellow is the actual location of the ditch, okay? And then numbers in blue is the highlighted, what we call the subdivided lots. So I want you to remember those because I'll talk to him a little bit, and I know Phil did. This is clearly a mapping error. We don't have to be professionals or surveyors to notice that the ditch never has been there. It is clearly an error. So if we go to the next page, I'm going to take, this is directly from the description from the 1976 September 29th Open Space Board of Trustees meeting, where they're describing the boundaries for what they want open space to be. So highlighted in pink, at Forest Avenue, the east boundary would then So highlighted in pink, at Forest Avenue, the east boundary would then become the blue line, which is here and understood as being 150 feet west of the center line of Third Street. Fence following the blue line, south to the west line of Alpine, which would be 150 feet east of the southeast corner of Hertzor property. So this gets to the question about these lots along Third Street. If you go and look at the comp plan map, those actually are mostly in Area 3, the back half of their lots, and are not in the city. And they're either, the ones that are in the city, the back half of the lot is OSDR. So I think that helps clarify that issue that's come up, about the stuff to the north. So then there's a little yellowed space there. Fence, it would go directly south to that point at which intersects the east bank of the Silver Lake Ditch. A small, little area there in yellow, and it's highlighted with the arrow. And then in orange, fence following Silver Lake Ditch to a point where it approximately intersects the subdivided lots owned by the sanitarium, and that designation would include those lots. It clearly was the intent for open space, everything west of the ditch. So if the ditch was clearly in a wrong location, I believe that that is the result of this open space other error. To further that, there's a memorandum from staff on the following page that once again highlights, and this is from 1990, that they are looking at everything west of the Silver Lake Ditch. Visual and passive recreational qualities, everything west of the ditch. So once again, if you go to the final page, it then is an attachment to their exhibit, and Phil showed this earlier, showing everything west of the ditch and what they want to acquire. So it's very easy to see that we clearly had a mapping error, and the intent was to be west of the ditch, which caused this error to take place. So I do want to clear up a few things. Since it has come up, we are proposing our site review, and you will see it. There's a city-drafted access easement across the Dakota Ridge Trail that we're proposing. We've submitted with our application, and it will be part of it. We are continuing to preserve access. The open space other designation, as it sits today, as much as people would like to think, it does not guarantee parking on the site. It does not guarantee access to the site as it exists today. We want to address that through site review, and we think we've done a very thorough job of doing that. I believe that's the simplest, easiest way to take a very complicated issue and take stuff directly from the notes of the Open Space Board of Trustees and staff over history and compile it in a very brief, concise map. So I appreciate your time tonight and look forward to your decision.
Thank you, Mr. Bosma. Next up is Catherine Schweiger. Welcome.
So Catherine Schweiger, 628 Maxwell. In my 40 years of standing at this podium advocating for my neighborhood, I am going to do something different tonight, and I'm going to advocate for a position that could be construed to favor the developer. Tonight's agenda item is not about development, it is about open space. When I was working as a landscape architect and had to switch my hat to the hat of a draftsman, I was much relieved when I determined that my maps did not need to be preserved for posterity. I could map with a pencil on trash and take an electric eraser to my maps and correct them. Mapping errors happen. So that's one question that you need to look at tonight. The second one you need to look at is whether this parcel is appropriate for the open space portfolio, and it is not. It is a developed parcel. The parcels that have been mentioned before that were acquired to the north have no development on them. So this parcel doesn't belong in the open space portfolio, and it is perfectly appropriate for you to change the designation on it. I hope what I have lacked in eloquence, I have made up for with brevity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schweiger. And we do appreciate brevity, so. Next up is Pamela Dennis. And following Ms. Dennis, Craig Jaeger. Welcome, Ms. Dennis.
Thank you. I'm Pamela Dennis. I live on Noelwood Drive, adjacent to the 311 Project. I've lived in Boulder for 40 years. I'm past president of Historic Boulder. I'm a retired business owner in Boulder and an international business consultant. I attended the Open Space Board of Trustees meeting a couple weeks ago, and for the first time, I felt compelled to say something in a public forum then and again tonight. My comments tonight are not about the details of maps. They're not about the details of the values of open space. My comments tonight are, have a single purpose, and that is to suggest that there's an important lens I'd like you to use as you consider this decision. And it's the lens of integrity. Integrity and legitimacy of your planning staff, its research, its findings, and its conclusions. The integrity of the property developers as holders of shared values for open space, for historic preservation, for compromise, and for collaboration. Let me give some well-known examples to support why I see integrity as an important lens tonight. First, for decades, NOAA, the American and world meteorological organizations, and dozens of scientific institutions concluded that global warming was accelerated by man-made activities. The vast majority of scientists agreed, yet 40% of Americans do not believe these conclusions or that it matters. Similarly, your county and planning staff has concluded that while maps and the OS other designation is more likely an error, 800 or more people have chosen not to believe this conclusion. And whether the number is 800 or 1,800, it does not make their conclusion correct. Second, after years of research, the Surgeon General's office concluded long ago that cigarette smoking was a cause of lung cancer. Their primary interest was the general welfare of United States citizens. The tobacco industry-supported scientific research presented alternative facts and stating the opposite. Their interests were not as noble. I encourage you to support the integrity of your planning staff, to produce unbiased work versus clearly passionate neighborhood activists whose first and foremost concern is, I have a pooled.
Oh.
Yeah, I have pooled.
Oh, sorry, this was in the corner. But yes, is Mr. Semborski, Semborski? Okay, yes, so another two minutes.
No worries. So I encourage you to support the integrity of the planning staff to produce unbiased work versus an activist group who first and foremost oppose this project in general. Third, I remember when there were neighborhood concerns and distracting issues opposed to the redevelopment of the Highland School and St. Gertrude Academy. Yet those are now beautiful additions to their surrounding neighborhoods and contributors to many nonprofit endeavors in Boulder. The 311 property owners have shown no less exemplary collaboration and respect for the values of open space and historic preservation as evidenced by their offer of easements and the preservation of the dormitory building. This issue of integrity, this is an issue of integrity, and I urge you to rectify the error in the open space designation of this piece of property and allow the 311 project to move forward into the next phase of review without this distraction. And at the risk of making you mad, and with all due respect, if you find you cannot correct this error, then I ask you to recommend an act of integrity to the city council, and that is that they buy the piece of private property with open space funds, even though the Board of Trustees does not want, does not recommend that. It will no doubt be the most expensive acquisition of a parking lot and a social trail in Boulder open space history. But it will demonstrate the integrity of values in action. Thank you for considering this lens of integrity.
Thank you, Ms. Dennis. Craig Jaeger, followed by Mark Schornhaus. Welcome.
Hi. Craig Jaeger, 2535 Seventh Street. I've been reading this book called "Breeding Sweetgrass," and the point is made that we used to treat land differently. We treated it as a gift. And when I was a kid, I'd ride my bike up to this area, and, you know, I'd just leave my bike on the side and walk up there. And I put my hand up one time while I was climbing up on the rocks, and my hand sat onto an Indian arrowhead. It was just so amazing, and it was clearly, for me, a gift from this area that I was in. Olmsted saw that when he said, "What beautiful nature has provided." The idea of providing something for us, it's not like they were asking anything of us who are providing it. I think that's the spirit of open space. The idea that we can shift our belief that land is commodity, and clearly, open space is buying it for everyone, but it is a gift to everyone. So I would ask, like Tolstoy asked, how much land does a man need? This is a mammoth area. It would be just a wonderful gift to say, "Boulder, here's access to this open space."
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Next up, Mark Schornhaus, followed by Karen McLune, I believe. Welcome, Mr. Schornhaus. If I pronounced that correctly.
That's probably more correct than the way I pronounce it. So, Mark Schornhaus, 2186 Noelwood Drive. So I was also at the Open Space Board meeting a little while ago, and the thing that I was talking about was, you know, we're, right now, we're talking about a mapping error. And, you know, I also complimented Phil in, and I'll compliment him again, his work was excellent, and I wish I could get my guys to do that level of work. So the, you know, this whole thing about changing things that are, you know, treasured by Boulder, there was an example just a couple years ago, which was the blue line. So that was changed, and it was changed for a variety of reasons, you know, consistency and to kind of, you know, accommodate reality of what Boulder is today. I mean, I was a benefit of that. Now I'm inside the blue line, which is great for me. But, you know, there were, there were a lot of reasons to do that. And I don't see that you can't take the same way of thinking with this OSO. So, you know, that was reflecting reality and establishing consistency seemed to be a primary thing for the blue line. So looking at this, I mean, there's a lot of talk about open space, and everybody loves open space. That's great. But, you know, the realities here, there are some realities that we need to also be, you know, reflecting reality. That was another theme. So the realities here are, you know, it's private property, it's Zone P. The OSO designation overlay on that doesn't mean you can't develop, right? I mean, that's, that's something that hasn't really been talked about today. I mean, you could conceptually just leave it OSO and still have the site plan approved. There's nothing saying that you can't do that. I think it would just be more convenient for everybody, because there's, it's not just this property, it's, you know, there's, they've got a companion project to go with affordable housing, or, yeah, affordable housing on a different property. So, I mean, this, in the big picture, this isn't about one thing, it's about many. And I think that this would be, you know, a real good thing to just kind of clear the path to go forward with the project through the site plan and all the other good stuff. Another thing, you know, I'm sitting back there thinking, you know, what kind of problems are we trying to solve here? I mean, this open space OSO designation overlay on private property, what is really at risk here? And the developer's already said he's going to give easements, or they will provide easements, or actually, they're going to agree to the easements the city has already drafted. So it can't be access. I mean, most everybody accesses it already from the Fourth, from Fourth Street. They don't go up through the property. I mean, I guarantee you, if you did a study, that it would, it would dwarf, the Fourth Street access would dwarf coming up through the property there, through 311. And so, you know, I mean, I just, this whole thing, to me, seems to be ready for.
Wrap up your thought.
Yeah, ready for a decision. I think everybody would appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Schornhaus. Next up, Karen McLune.
McLune, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I borrow your slide? If you, can you pull up there?
Which slide is it?
You had several. Was there a particular map or?
Yeah, there was an aerial photo. So I'm not part of the larger group. I live at 4770 Lee Circle, so I'm east of Foothills.
And why don't we get it up and then?
Yeah, sure.
Did you want a site map or?
Yeah, it was earlier. Let's see if I can.
Just while we're waiting to get up, the next and last speaker I have signed up is Jean Aschenbrenner. And if anyone else would like to join the queue, it looks like at least someone else has, but certainly let Cindy know. Thank you. Ms. McLune, thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you for, very much for having me and letting me speak. I wanted to pick up on two things that I've heard in the earlier conversations. Ms. Gray, your comment about the steep slopes and protecting steep slopes, and also the comment that we just heard about climate change. One of the co-benefits of open space is that it's defensible space for fire, and particularly on those steep slopes, you know, this is, the part of the co-benefit we get from our open space up against the mountains is defensible space. And looking at it from a climate change perspective, as a climate change scientist and a resilience specialist, we want to maintain that. Our fire risk is going up. I'm involved with resilience work through, you know, sort of 100 resilient cities, not in, not in Boulder, and I certainly don't speak for the Boulder. Resilience are, but we are one of the 100 resilient cities. What we do here is being watched. I have huge concerns about the idea of putting an assisted living facility in the red zone. I know that's not what we're discussing tonight, and so I'm not going to go there. I will be showing up at later hearings about this, however, if it goes forward. But if this land is currently open space, that's part of what the open space designation was. It was viewscapes, it was recreation, but it's also defensible space. It's avoiding space that's prone to landslides. There are reasons that we chose to leave this open and not develop on it, and it's kept us safe. It's part of why we haven't had the sorts of fires that we saw in Colorado Springs a few years ago. And it's certainly a piece that we want to maintain so we don't see the sorts of fires that they had in Santa Rosa this year. And so just as, as you think about what the intention is, I mean, the earlier maps that were shown, to me, it looks pretty clear that this parcel was purchased before they started with the open space designation. And so we carefully have open space that moves around the parcel. And because the parcel was lightly developed, because it had a dairy and cows, because there weren't a lot of buildings, because it was a sanitarium and was providing a public benefit, it didn't get rolled into the open space designation. But now, if it's designated open space, if there is reasonable reason to assume that it is not a mapping error, why would we change that? I think we put ourselves at risk to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLune. Next up, Jean Aschenbrenner. And then Marilyn Whitaker afterwards. Welcome, Ms. Aschenbrenner.
Thank you. I'm Jean Aschenbrenner, and I live at 2695 Calmia, so not right next to 311 Mapleton. A long time ago, my manager asked me to look into a proposal and make a recommendation what we should do about it. So I did the math, and I ran the statistics, and then I went back to her, and I said, "What do you want the conclusion to be?" Because even though statistics are mathematical and they're not emotional, I could make the statistics say whatever one wanted them to say. I'm impressed with both sides tonight, because they've done tons of research and a lot of good reasoning to come to their conclusions of whether or not this should, this was meant to have open space O designation. I think- I think there was a lot of integrity on both the sides of the citizens who worked hard and the staff. So what's my lens? I have faith in open space. I love open space. I use it all the time. For 34 years, I've been voting for open space, and I've been paying taxes for open space. And when I start to see changes that are not for some absolutely clear reason, I start questioning open space, and my faith is eroded. And I've listened to all the arguments tonight, think what it's like for the other people in Boulder who haven't listened to the arguments and don't understand that it clearly is a mapping error. So I would ask for all the citizens in Boulder that you not change this designation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aschenbrenner. Next up is Marilyn Whitaker. Welcome, Ms. Whitaker.
Good evening. Thank you very much for serving our community and listening to the many ideas that have been presented tonight. I hadn't planned to speak, but oh, boy, I tell you. I volunteer up at Rocky Mountain, and I volunteered there even when I lived in Michigan and used to drive out for the summer. And you know how the, all the newspaper reports are about how the population just continues to increase, increase, increase. And I'm there in the summer, and I see how people are turned away because there's no place to park. And they come, you have to get there by eight if you want to go to Bear Lake. And, you know, you got little kids, you gotta hurry, 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 rush, rush, rush to get to the park. And you're talking about access, but you're not talking about where are people going to park when they come. And I'm from Michigan, I call it Sanitas. But anyway, I don't know where they're going to park. It's hard enough now. And you talk about access, well, it's not going to do people any good to be able to access it if they can't drive there and park somewhere. I can't, I'm, I'm, oh, I didn't tell you, I'm on nine, I'm on Poplar Place now. But I used to be way out east. So now I do more stuff in Boulder. And honestly, I couldn't, if I, I couldn't walk to Sanitas and then hike and then walk home. And I can't ride my bike anymore either, so I'm going to have to drive. And if I drive, I need a place to park. So as you talk about access, and this, you're still going to have access, you've got to have a place for people to be able to park their cars. I'm thinking, and just that it's open space, think 100 years from now, you know there's going to be more people here and wanting to hike. And if they don't have access and parking, they're not going to come there. So I think about Leopold talking about being good stewards of the land. We'll never get those four acres back. We'll never get them back. It just, it just doesn't happen. So thanks again, and please keep the designation as is.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. Cindy, has anyone else signed up?
No.
Would anyone else like to sign up and address the board tonight? Seeing no takers, I will close the public hearing. Why don't we take about a five-minute, 10-minute break before we continue our deliberation? I do encourage everyone to stay who'd like to listen to the conversation. We'll take a quick break right now. Thank you.
How are you doing?
Good. How are you?
My name is Craig Gager, my son's teacher for three years.
With that.
And I figured one from each side, so, and it's not, I'll see.
Well, actually, I still.
If it was, I could not.
If folks could sit down, we're about to get started here. If your name is Chris. You guys ready?
We are.
Yes. All right. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Thanks for everybody's patience. I want to start with kind of last opportunity, as people keep asking, but if anybody has any additional questions for staff before we start deliberation, why don't we start with that? David?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on Harmon's question, just a little more with the timeline. So if, I understand that there's going to be a discussion on Monday, but if we did a site review on April 19th before a decision was made by council on this issue, would we be able to do the site review on 4/19? That's just a question I had.
Yes, there's, the open space other designation doesn't prevent a site review from going forward.
Okay, and we would just have to take into account that we would have to treat it as if the designation had not been changed, because it had not yet been fully decided.
That's correct.
Okay. That was my clarification.
So, can I get a little more? So then, so then the, if we were to approve a site review prior to the zoning and map change, then the site review would actually be, the final approval of the site review would be contingent upon those changes being made.
So, yeah, so that would be one way, if there was an approval, it could be approved in that way, but just having an OSO designation also doesn't prohibit development. The, in most properties in the city, the land use map designation for those properties doesn't at all get taken into consideration in development. The reason it comes up here is that this property is subject to site review, and the site review criteria refer to the land use map, so that's the only reason it comes in. So it's not a general development prohibition. And when you read the land use map description in the comp plan, it acknowledges that while in private ownership, the use of the land may not be open space, and that preservation may not be occurring at that point in time. So during the site review, it would be upon you to interpret whether or not the site plan would be consistent with the land use map designation. And in the past, it's been interpreted to be a designation that shows that the city would like to purchase fee ownership, or some other kind of development restrictions or preservation rights, such as conservation easements, or there have been some other development restricting agreements and covenants put on properties, but in such a way that the designation indicates that the city would like to place the property under management and control of open space, of the open space department in some kind of fashion or form, but not as a regulatory restriction prohibiting development of the property.
Other questions before we start deliberation? Crystal?
Just, I'd like to have, I have a question about that, is when we approved the Bank of America branch off 28th Street, kind of in the Hazel parking lot, that, the Boulder Slough goes through that property. In fact, to the east, it goes through the target, it's underground, goes through the target property that's underground, I think I'm right there.
That's right.
And then it goes through the Google, the new Google building, which it's daylighted, and it goes across 30th Street, and then into the REV project where it's going to be daylighted. And I bring it up because that's an open space other.
That's correct.
Designation. And, and we took that into consideration for the REV project and the Google project, and people can see the bike path. Now, that is not managed in any way by the open space department, so I just want to be clear, that just because it says open space other, it doesn't mean that it's going to be dedicated to open space. In this case, it was transportation and the ditch company, so, right?
Yeah, it does, I think, I think the designations occurred on the map because that was anticipated, that it would be preserved in that manner and controlled through that department. But you're right, there, there are many areas, and, and I remember the Bank of America, I hadn't thought of Google and, and the REV. But yeah, and those areas have, were developed as well, and you took the designation into consideration.
And one thing I wanted to say about the Bank of America project, when it came to us in concept plan, the building was actually sighted on the open space other portion, and they moved it, I believe it was one or two feet, for the site, for the final site review. Now, we didn't mandate them to move it, but they listened to the discussion about open space other, and they just voluntarily moved it, but it's still in a pipe under there. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, that not all open space other, it's certainly not intended to be bought by the open space department.
Any other?
Thank you.
David?
Sorry, I do have one more question. So the 1976 minutes describing the line heading south till it meets the east side of the ditch, would we consider this to have the legal heft of, say, a plat or a, or a lot description? Or, or is it more of, you know, a description that was voted on in a public meeting, so it has that kind of, can you just comment a little bit about, is that the ultimate description of where that line would go?
Hello, may want to elaborate, but I definitely wouldn't call it a legal description, and I think it was probably something where if you were attempting to do that at the dais, you could describe an area such as that, but in terms of a legal precise description, I don't think I would categorize it as that. I'll also say that the maps at that time, like the 1981 map and the comp plan maps did have a disclaimer on it that said something along the lines of, due to the scale of the map accuracy is not guaranteed, or something along those lines, and so, just.
All right. But it, but it was voted on in minutes and approved, okay.
Any other questions? So with that, Harmon?
I was hoping, well, I was offering it to other people on the left side of you, if there are none, I just have two for Phil and one for Hella. And I'd like to hear answers to these before we deliberate. So, one is, how do you address the assertion around the 1978 OSMP map, including the OSO portion, but the mapping error not occurring until the 1979 parcel map error? That's for you, Phil.
We've gotten, for example, from the, from Boulder County Land Use Department, parcel map dating back to the 50s, and so we think it was a longstanding error, and we've done our best to kind of dredge up all the information that we can, we can find.
So is that, are you referencing the drum map from early to mid 20th century that you've referenced in the January memo back to Nicole Wobus over at the county, then?
Yes.
Okay, and then, secondly, before you go, I think Bethany was coming down, so, from the OSMP.
Oh, thanks, Bethany.
I was confirming what Phil had said. Those were the oldest maps that the county had provided to us when we were researching this matter, but older maps likely, older parcel maps likely do exist, that's just the oldest that, that we were provided. Again, they then furnished a 1955 drum map that shows the ditch in the same location, so.
The same incorrect location?
Yeah.
Okay. So the second question is, how do we address, I heard, I heard an assertion that the line that is supposedly an error was surveyed with meets and bounds, that, that there's some, some meets and bounds legal description that describes the border of the OSO, and somehow that's more persuasive. I don't, I didn't see any meets and bounds anywhere except in the resolutions of the OSMP, or the OSBT.
Yeah, I can talk to the, Bethany's coming up, but the land use maps were hand-drawn, and they were not surveyed from the comp plan.
That's correct. We've never found anything indicating meets and bounds description of any of the OSO designations anywhere, actually. You know, parcel mapping now is obviously based upon the legal description of lots or properties and things like that, but.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then my last question is just, we heard a lot of conversation about the clear error standard, and, and Hella, I just, you know, my, my understanding, my kind of law school understanding of clear error is that it's the middle ground between beyond a reasonable doubt and preponderance of the evidence, and it's the hardest one to figure out, because beyond a reasonable doubt's almost absolute, and preponderance just means tip the scale to 51%, but people disagree on what clear error is. Is it 65% sure? Is it 80% certainty? Do we, do we look at it that way when we look at the clearer, if there even is a clear error standard? Because I didn't really see it as a standard. I just saw it as a word, clearly erroneous in the, in the language of the comp plan.
Yeah, that's a good question. I see it more as a word as well. I think, I think it's very similar to, probably to the clear, clear error standard that you're referencing that might be used by a court, but we're looking at interpreting this comp plan, and I looked at the comp plan and, and the IGA, and there's not really any other indication of what it might mean, there's certainly no definition that's provided, and so I would just recommend to go with the plain and ordinary meaning.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I had one, maybe for you, Hella, maybe for you, Phil. There was also discussion about whether preserving this designation would preserve public access either to park, or to kind of cross over in that area, and does this designation provide any right to the public to go through, or is that something that the property owner could cut off anytime?
Yeah, the designation doesn't provide any rights to the public to access the property to park there, anything like that.
Great, thank you. Any last questions? So we have a fairly, as opposed to what we usually have, fairly simple question, it's really just one question, which is whether there is that clear mapping error or other issue on that front, and so I don't think there's any subdivision of issues that we can talk about, there's really just one. So I would like to recommend that we just move down the panel here and have folks offer their opinion, we can have a little bit of discussion or debate about that, and then I would entertain a motion, and look forward to people's thoughts. David, I don't know if you feel comfortable in starting, I've got to start on one side or the other, and I'll just go on my right hand since I'm right-handed, but if you don't mind getting started, that'd be terrific.
Sure. Yeah, and actually, the last point that was brought up kind of reminds me of when I was on a jury, and I really struggled with the idea of beyond a reasonable doubt. When I read the clearly, clearly is a pretty high bar for me, and I, I heard people, I heard the point that we, you know, asking us to make a decision based on integrity. And, so yeah, I will apply integrity to that, and integrity to me says, okay, maybe if I read those words, I could possibly say that it's clear that there's a mapping error. However, it's also very clear to me that we, the 50 years that that has been there has existed, and I would like that clear to be really clear. And as a result, I'm kind of reluctant to, to let it raise to that level for me at this point. I would like to deliberate a bit and see what others think, but at this point, given the, given the moving parts, given the fact that, you know, that a lot of the extraneous stuff can't be guaranteed anyway, I really am not so sure that I would want to, and the fact that two bodies came with language that said, the county said plausible, and the OSBT folks said probably, they didn't say clearly. I kind of, I'm kind of on their page right now, and that's where I'm, I'm sitting.
Thanks, David. Harmon?
So some of the things that, that I'm considering are the, the OSO designation generally being for parcels which, in which the, the city has an interest in purchasing some sort of an ownership or a right, and here the city never has. I think that there's, there's not just the city, but just in general planning terms, municipalities frown on split land use designations. This parcel has a split land use designation, but there's never been any subdivision of the parcel, there's no parcel boundary that says that on one side of the line, we're going to have open space, and on the other side of the line, we're going to have public. You couldn't get split zoning right now in Boulder, generally if you tried. I think it's a little strange also to apply an open space designation to a property that has been developed, and to put an open space designation over an actual building, and a road, and a parking area, which has very little to no open space value whatsoever. And, and then there is the issue of the mapping and the, the location of the ditch being shown in the wrong place on older maps. And so to me, most of these factors do point to an unintentional mistake to put OSO on a part of a parcel that was developed.
So I agree, I think, with much of what you said, Harmon. I will also say I struggled, David, with that word clearly, which is in there for a reason, and, you know, is more than just a 50-50 proposition, I think, and so the question is, where are we along that spectrum? That being said, I think some of the factors that are critical here is, this designation has a particular shape, and I can't find any justification for that shape, other than the mislabeled ditch location. If there was a broader desire to protect the Dakota Ridge, I think it would add a different shape than that, and that's not what we have here. And I do, especially loving the open space and having spent a lot of time on the open space board, having acquired a lot of land, you know, this is developed property and not open space, and it hasn't been open space for a very long time, because it's had that developed use. And I certainly hear, you know, a lot of the points made by the community about steep slope, fire protection, access, all those things, which I think are important considerations that our site review criteria do address, and we should definitely consider those in the site review, and may result in no development or modified development. Any of those things are possible, I think, under our site review, but I don't think they inform the question about whether this is open space or intended to be open space on that front. And I think, given the fact, a few things, one, it's not in our acquisition plan, hasn't been in our acquisition plan, and we generally don't acquire fully developed parcels like this, and parking lots, it's also not included as part of our parking plan. We went through a very extensive public process in the West Trail Study Area, looking at places where parking and trailheads would be, this was not one of them. We have limited resources in the open space program, and we did identify, I think, the critical areas. Again, this was not one of those places that was identified, and indeed, we put investment in other locations to improve trailheads, because we didn't own it, and it wasn't identified as an acquisition target. So as a result, I do believe that it hits that clearly line, I think it's also one that's really close to that line, and I think, I agree with David about the struggle, and I've struggled about this over the last few weeks while looking at this issue, but I do think it beats that test.
Yeah, I agree with most of everything that you guys have said, and David, your hesitance to sort of have it rise to that level for you is totally respectable, and I feel that too. To me, it's really more about, what's the observable landmark that was involved with the shaping of this? And I think it lines up with what you're saying, John, is that was the ditch. There isn't another geometry that would create this out there than a misdrawn line. I feel like it's really tempting for us, all of us actually, to look at all the things that are outside of this particular question, this is a map change for us, not site review. Site review is where we will look at access, we will look at the easement that will provide trail continuity from existing places to, across the site. The question of whether there could be parking there is going to be a part of the site review question, so it's not part of what we're talking about tonight. The question of whether historic structures are going to be preserved is a question for site review, not a part of what we're doing tonight. So all of those things, I have to put out of my head and think about, like, does it make sense that this was a map error or not? And I really can't, for the life of me, find anything else that would lead to it other than a map error. And I, you know, I'm an architect, and I've spent a lot of time drawing stuff like this, and I know how this stuff all works with zipatone and pens and, you know, all that sort of stuff as well. So to me, it's really plausible that it was a map error, and to me, it feels like it's, it's clear enough for me to have it be corrected as a, as a mapping error at this point.
Thank you, Brian. Crystal?
I actually think that there is no clear error, and I agree with David's comments that he started out on this, and thank you for mentioning the county's letter and the open space board's letter. I want to talk a little bit about open space other. Open space other does, never shows up on the city's acquisition plan. It's within the Area 1, the annexed area of the city. I gave the example of the REV project and Google project. City didn't acquire those, they had no intention, but they are being used to serve a public purpose. In this case, it's the trails that go through it. As far as the shape goes, I think it would be really helpful, Phil, to have a contour map, because it's not just the ditch, I think it's purposeful that that east boundary follows a contour, and it's, you know, has to do with what you can see from the east, east side of the city, and that's part of, whoops, that's part of the, the reason that I think some of the mapping came up. The other one is, I believe Russell Hendrickson gave us this wonderful handout with the 1978 open space map, that it actually showed proposed open space on it. You all have that. That was also some convincing, a convincing argument for me, and Mr. Koenig brought that up also, that, that it was evidence of a purposeful intention, that there was an intention to preserve open space in that area. I thought Ken Dunn, well, so many people made so many good, I'm not going to go through everyone's names, but made such good comments on both sides of this issue, but I thought Ken Dunn raised the legal standard, has not been meant, not a clear error. And he also mentioned retention as open space other is consistent with longstanding mission statement of the city charter, and he brought up some safety concerns. The one thing I didn't look at, and I should have, I have this map hanging on my living room wall, it's the Frederick Olmsted Company's 1910 Plan for the City of Boulder. I meant to take a picture of it to see where this stood, but I didn't, didn't get it together in time, but I will go home and do that, and it might be interesting when you go to council with this. I also wanted to bring up, we have another hospital in town, Boulder Community Health, and when that was developed, they actually preserved a large portion of that site for open space, that were floodplain issues and things like that, and that is, you know, that's a, that's something that a lot of people have done in town when they have a special piece of property. But I am not going to support the staff recommendation, but the staff did a super job. I was just really glued to your memo, reading the history of, of the open space meetings, so thank you for that, but I'm not supporting your recommendation.
Thank you, Crystal. Peter?
Benefit of going last is that I get to hear everything. And I get to see my own points getting ticked off or not, and I had the same mental issue of separating this from site review, as I was, things were coming up. The, I don't know if the fact that it's developed or not is relevant to whether or not. not it is OSO or not. I hear that. Doesn't look like my version of what I was taught was open space from being in Boulder. Looking at the contour, because that was going to be the final piece for me, because it otherwise does seem to follow the mistake of the ditch, and that's not dispositive. The contour isn't totally dispositive for me. It's really hard. I'm going to go with that it was the ditch error.
Great. Is there any kind of follow-up discussion? Brian?
I'd like to make just a quick comment that I forgot to make before, which is that, you know, open space other is a really difficult land use in our mapping system. It goes down Valmont, through strip malls and apartment buildings, it goes through trailer parks, it goes through all of the warehouses along 47th Way. It cuts a huge wide swath through developed, absolutely not open space land through the city of Boulder, and a lot of that follows ditches. And, you know, it's kind of interesting to look at it, because if you track it through town, it'll be really skinny here, and then it'll cross the street and get super fat. And it's really clear that there's a lot of slop and disorganization to the way it was applied. And so that's one of the things that, to me, like, makes me feel like, wow, there's a lot of, like, junk in this whole system, and this is another part of it. That's all I want to say. Thanks for having me. I'm just a bite of the apple.
Can I just -- I mean, I -- Brian and I have --
I'm not having a bite of you.
No, no, no. Brian and I have been kind of looking at maps here, and he's exactly right. The Boulder Slough is such a good example, but think of the potential for the Boulder Slough if it had been -- if that land hadn't been developed now in 2018, we'd be saying, of course, this is how we want to treat some of our waterways and drainages and things like that. So, yeah, it's regretful that we put things underground in pipes, and, you know, we're talking about that with Goose Creek, as it goes under a pipe over to Alpine, Balsam, and North Boulder. But those are errors we don't have to make in the future.
David?
Since I went first, I've got a few things now that I've heard what you've all said. I do agree that the contour thing doesn't correlate at all with me because I see that it has to go up across contour lines either earlier or later. However, the ditch, the ditch does argue for the clearly side of the equation. It's just that it doesn't rise to that level for me. And I'd like to say that if I were in a position to vote that it clearly was a mapping error, it would make -- in some ways, it would make life easier, right? Because, oh, maybe then the site review wouldn't be so convoluted because we have all these open questions that still have to be resolved by council and everything. But all of that stuff is kind of tangential. I just, I really don't think I can go back 50 years and try to go through this and say, well, clearly to me, this was an error. So I'm going to not support. And I also want to say thank you for a great analysis. It was very clear, and it was very thorough, but I won't be supporting this one.
Other thoughts?
I'll offer just one more, which I think feeds into some of the same place and talks about consequences of the decision we have to make and then council ultimately will make, which is, the best way for this to have been dealt with would have been if it had been caught earlier and had been included in the comp plan update, or it still could be. And so even if we were to deny it, or council were to deny it, my suspicion is this issue will be back to us. And so one of the considerations would be, do we want to have it go out on the error question or go back to the amendment? I believe it's there just because we didn't -- we have a lot of things to do in those comp plan updates. It took a lot of time, a lot of staff effort, a lot of community effort, and it's hard to focus on all the other parcels when you have those places. I'm still convinced there was a clear error here, so I think this is the appropriate place. That being said, you know, if we don't address it tonight, it can and probably will come back at that point, and there'll be more opportunity for people to consider it. Any last thoughts or a motion? Nobody goes home without a motion, so.
Yeah, I'll make a motion once I figure out where to tab back to my deal here.
It's on page six. Cool. My move that we find a discrepancy exists within the BVCP regarding the land use map designation on the 311 Mapleton property that's clearly the result of a drafting error, mapping discrepancy, or a clerical mistake, and to correct the land use map and designate the entire 311 Mapleton property as public.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Have a motion. Go ahead.
Speak to it really briefly, which is that the last thing you said, I think, makes a lot of sense. It would make a huge difference if we were not looking at these things in the context of looming development or anything like that. Makes it a lot more difficult to have the discourse around it, be really objective. And so to that end, I'd love to see us take on fixing some of this open space other stuff sometime soon would be great, before we have to do this again. Because I think, on the time I've been on the board, this is like the sixth or seventh time, so it'd be awesome to not keep doing it. Thanks, though.
Are there other comments on the motion?
I'll offer just very brief ones myself, which is to go back to the point that I think a lot of the points raised tonight are totally germane to that site review application, and nothing I have to say tonight prejudges any of that because I do think there are significant questions about defensible space and the steep slopes and other sort of issues, but that's not what's in front of us tonight. But we can deal with that, and indeed, I think, under the site review criteria, we have to deal with that as a board, and, you know, that will be for another night, so.
Piggybacking on that, you know, I just want to exhort, should this go forward to site review, the applicant and staff to do things that are befitting of Boulder, to do things that are sensitive and sensible uses of land. An idea is, in a situation where you have folks living in an old age home type scenario, you have people who have cars that rarely move them, we have a baking sun and lots of snow, we have a need for parking for visitors, a deck that maybe the city would get involved in leasing or paying for part of the construction of, you know, out-of-the-box thinking so that we can better use our limited land resources would be appreciated when it does come back.
Excellent. Any other thoughts? Otherwise, call a question. We had a motion that was made by Brian, seconded by Harmon. All in favor of that, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, please say no and raise your hand.
No.
No.
Okay, that passes 4-2 with David and Crystal opposed.
I love your political future, boys.
Yeah, really.
Thank you very much. With that, we still have some other business on our agenda tonight. So we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is matters from the Planning Board, Planning Director, and City Attorney. And actually, why don't we just give a moment, folks, to clear out? Everyone is welcome to continue to join us.
No one's in charge of -- everyone's here about our agenda items, future meetings or calendar checks. This is a sad moment here.
Yeah.
So are you not going to be here on the 15th?
I'm not looking to be. I'm out of town. So unless that changes, I'll miss it, unfortunately.
Okay. That's why. I just needed to understand that, why this was your last meeting. We'd be shorthanded on that.
That's why I'm supposed to be in Las Vegas, or not Las Vegas, New Orleans. So.
Not bad.
All right. With that, a couple of things. First, I just want to thank staff for really a lot of excellent research and spade work on a really tough issue, so thank you very much all for digging in. And Bethany, thanks for coming to yet another board here, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, you guys laid a great argument. That was a fantastic package, really good job.
So.
And a great presentation to back it up.
Yeah, tough issue.
And I wanted to thank Bethany also, as a former Open Space Board member, but also as a member of the public, you know, that we have such good staff, so I appreciate that. And by the way, one of the people in the minutes of 1970, was it six? Dr. McCarty told me that it's called Sanitas, and he wrote the climbing book called High Over Boulder. So, and he said, all the old timers call it Sanitas. Now, that was in 1976, he told me, so now I'm one of the old timers calling it Sanitas.
In Latin?
All of them?
All the Latin-based languages.
But also thank you both to Phil and Bethany for being walking wounded tonight, so.
Yeah, thank you.
We appreciate that. Anything from staff, City Attorney's Office? Then I'll bring it back to the board. Any matters from the board? I just want to say thank you to all of you for making this the exceptionally rewarding board, that it's been staff is first class, and you do a huge amount to support us, and it makes it a whole lot easier because it is often difficult, but more importantly, I think, pleasurable and intellectually satisfying, and important work goes on here that is possible because of all of you. So I really deeply appreciate it, and once again, incredibly proud of our city, and I'm proud of you. We have a national reputation, and it's because of, you know, the hard work as well as the engagement from the board, the public, and everybody else. So this is probably my last meeting because I'm scheduled to be out of town on the 15th. There's an outside chance I won't be, in which case I'll just show up.
You're going to have to make the same speech again, actually.
I'll have to make -- I'll see you. You'll check me word for word, I'm sure, so, but I did want to thank everybody.
We have to buy you another card.
Yeah, yeah, and the price goes up, man.
John, you're an incredible class act. I've loved being on the board with you, so thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you.
I wanted to say, I was on City Council when John was on Open Space Board, and to the person, we all looked at you as such a steady hand. And really, he was an example of what I felt an Open Space Board of Trustees should be, and that's to really be looking out for the health of the open space system on behalf of current residents and future residents. And then we both applied for Planning Board together, and we got appointed. And I was really thrilled to serve with John. He was really wonderful. But our first meeting was Hogan-Pancas that we had. It was a three-day meeting, and I just think it's really fitting that the city's now buying Hogan-Pancas, and you kind of have this nice bookend around your term. And you were such a good chairman, and you were so respectful of the public always, and that's really important, I know, to all of us on Planning Board and the staff, and especially the public, so thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. If we hadn't bought Hogan-Pancas, we'd have more Hogan-Pancas hearings. I might have stuck around.
Yeah, that was the deal breaker for you.
Yeah.
Can I add? As my, completing my first year on Planning Board, I would really call you a mentor and a great example of what we all can live up to on this board. I've been, you know, I was just blown away on the first few meetings about how you would kind of summarize everything at the end so fairly and in just the right number of words, so it wasn't like this constant volume of stuff. So really, getting everybody's input and then being able to kind of summarize it and make everybody feel like they've been heard. There were just a lot of amazing standards to live up to, so I really appreciate it. And I won't be here on the 15th, so I won't. I have to say that now because even if you're here, I won't be.
Thank you, David.
Because of the restraining order, he's going to file against all of us.
Thanks, John, for setting a great example my first year.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, and I do hope, I think the key thing is just keep listening to the public. Leslie?
We can't let you get away without thanking you from staff, too. You've really been an exceptional chair and member of the board, and we really appreciate your service. And you've guided us through some big projects, a comprehensive plan update, and many challenging other cases, and have just done it brilliantly, so we really appreciate your service.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Well, John, I can't say it much better than Leslie just did.
You can gavel it out. Or that -- It's your last chance to gavel, Harmon, but you can gavel me.
Give me 30 seconds.
He wants to.
Yeah, no, David, you said it beautifully, and Leslie, you said it beautifully. But I also just wanted to say, I've served on a bunch of boards, and some of them have even been planning commissions and boards. And there's a special level of respect and dignity to this board, and I appreciate coming here and serving with you and with all the other Planning Board members. And you've played a big part in creating that sense of real care and decency, and I think we, you know, we don't always make the most popular decisions. Sometimes people like, some people like the decisions and other people don't. And it's a tough place for all of us to be, and to come here and feel a sense of safety and dignity while we're doing it is a gift, and for the major part of that gift that you've given us, I appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it from everybody, and keep doing the good work, so it's not stopping, so keep it up. Any other matters from the board?
I was just going to ask if we need to do a calendar check for a retreat, or when we're going to start planning that?
Or do we need to wait till you have a new member?
Yep.
I think we need to get a new member first.
Okay. So are we still planning on early May like normal?
Probably, yeah.
We could land on days that work for us at some point via email or something, and then if the new person can just pick amongst the ones that we've already all picked on, that would make things quicker, maybe.
I'm going to punt that to Charles and Jim Robertson, so we'll discuss it with them because they will set that schedule, I'm sure. I want to remind you that next week, we will be at the West Senior Center. Next, not next week, next meeting.
The 15th.
We'll be at the West Senior Center.
No TV.
No TV.
And are we the only two that aren't going to be there? I guess nobody else is.
I don't know about Liz, but.
I think Liz is there.
Liz is there. Then we should be okay.
And I think we should say it out loud. I'm assuming that since our chair is exiting the board, that Liz, as the vice chair, will take over his role as running the meetings until we have a retreat. That's the proper thing.
Actually, retreat or first meeting with the new member.
We can do it at the first meeting with the new person.
Yeah.
I believe.
But it would make sense, I think, that Liz stay.
Take the gavel, and had she not been recused, I would hand it to her, so.
Right. Leave it in her empty spot.
Gavel drop.
Yes.
Yeah.
Gavel drop.
We want to see the gavel drop.
Okay, well, then we'll do that right now. Gavel drop.
Good job.
Thanks, everybody.
Do you want your gun back?
Sure. Or unless you want to.